All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna get things going. Today is Monday, November 24. We're here for our regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. First order of business, as always, is Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the Land Acknowledgement Statement. The Town of South Kingstown pays homage to the Indigenous people and land on which the town is now located, but this acknowledgement serves as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognise, honour, reconcile, and partner with an air against the tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Next, we have the Roll Call.
Council President McGinty.
Here.
Council Vice President Maron.
Here.
Council Member Bergner.
Council Member Ali.
Here.
Council Member Wedgemont.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. It's gonna move us to Item 4, Approval of Minutes of Previous Meetings.
Motion to approve Item 4, A and B.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favour?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's now gonna bring us to Item 5, Interviews. We're gonna take up the interviews in the order in which they're listed on the agenda. First up, we've got Susan Mittendorf, looking to be reappointed to the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee. And for those applicants looking to be reappointed to their respective committees, I'm gonna ask you all fairly similar questions. This is a good opportunity to hear about your experience on the committee, so tell us what's going on, what are some challenges, some successes, and really, anything you wanna fill us in on. Go ahead. And if you just wanna click the button on the right.
You actually wanna hear me? Okay. So, yeah, I've, this is the second time I've stood before you. The last time I did, I told you how I felt uncredentialed, but I've gotta say, that's all over now. I understand a lot more than I did, things like inclusionary housing and comprehensive permits and missing middle, and so I feel really good about the work we're doing. And I see like a crack in the, like, I see some light in actually having affordable housing in South Kingstown. So, and I also feel very educated on the open meeting law, and there's been a lot of, I think the work that we're doing in trying to get the message out, trying to, you know, as we hear from the people within our world and helping them understand what it really means, because I think there's a misnomer about, you know, not in my neighbourhood or where we, you know, where we're putting people. Also, my experience with Habitat, I've been on the Board of Habitat Humanity for two years, and that South Kingstown chapter is, I mean, they really know how to do this kind of work, so.
All right.
If there's anything else.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions from council members?
I just wanna thank you for your willingness to keep on going, and I just wanna acknowledge all the things that you've learned about, and also being able to see the light, sort of, a little crack, so just keep chipping away, 'cause it's a big problem, but how do you eat an elephant?
Yeah.
Like, one bite at a time, so you've already gotten a few bites into it, so.
Yeah, I wanna see families be able to, people that work in this town be able to live in the town.
Right, the missing middle, really.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, next up, we have Richard Morrissey, also looking to be reappointed to the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee.
Good evening. I would agree with Sue on the crack in the foundation, where we're finally starting to see a little bit of light. I applaud what has happened with the properties, the three properties that the town owns, and the project plan that's starting to come forward, and the council's decision to start to spend a little money and move some of that dialogue beyond just concept into potential opportunities. I think we have to find a way, I recognise we're in a government transactional kind of environment, I came from a commercial transactional kind of environment where time moves much faster, but our problem is relatively large to try to solve in a short period of time. And I think our opportunity here is to think a little bit different about how we approach this problem, not to get to the 500 that we don't have, that we need to get to, because if we stay at the pace we're on, we will never get there. For every 10 houses you build, you need one affordable, and if you look at trying to get to 500 over that, the way we develop in this town is 13 homes, 12 homes, 2 homes, so the ability to get to 500 is near impossible, and I think you guys recognise that. But I think we have opportunities, like we have with the project out at the old APC Schneider Building, which is a tremendous opportunity for this town, to put 73 or 78 affordable units in a great location where we've got transportation hubs and other things, but again, I think that the Town Council, in my opinion, I would like to see more active in the discussion and the dialogue around those things. I would have loved to have a meeting with you guys this year, and I know your schedules are busy, but I think the opportunity for us to collaborate with you and make sure your goals are our goals, and our goals are your goals, and vice versa, and that we're not weaving and bobbing a lot, we missed this year. So I would just encourage you, as you look at next year's schedule, to think about how do we spend a little time together, because our job is to advise you. And if we're not here having a dialogue, the only way we can advise you is through emails and letters, and that's a one-way conversation, it's not a two-way conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any questions for Rich? All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have Peter Swain, also looking to be reappointed to the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to what Rich and Beverly have already said, so I will reiterate Rich's plea to have a meeting with you guys where we can really have some good dialogue. I think when I joined in March, there was an expectation that that was gonna happen almost at that time, and now, nine months later, we haven't progressed, but I do believe that you guys are listening hard, doing the best you can in a very difficult situation, so certainly appreciate that. I think that what they said is very much true. We need to move on the Tower Hill Road project, we need to move on the missing middle, we need to move on the three properties, we need to move on all of those things. So, we'll keep dialoguing with you, thanks.
All right, thank you. And we will work to get a meeting scheduled in 2026. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Kim Salisbury Keith, looking to be appointed to the Library Board of Trustees. Kim, welcome.
Welcome. It's good to be here. I didn't really know what to expect, this is my first time here. I've been a resident of South Kingston for about 30 years, and spent 35 years working for the Rhode Island Department of Health, managing large-scale programs such as the state immunisation program and informatics projects for the state. I have a variety of board experience, am a founding member of the American Immunisation Registry Association, of which I was president for a number of years, it's a large international organisation. A large part of my job with both at work and through the boards has been communicating information to the public and to health professionals. So, in terms of that, I think I may be a very good fit for the library, both my technical background, my board experience, and having been an avid user of all three library sites in town, both across generations for myself, my sons, and my granddaughter, where we've utilised all of the programs there, whether it's been ebooks, actual books, Author Meets, Hoopla, all of the things that bring there. Right now, it's an exciting time for Peacedale Library and the COVID recovery funds that they've received to do the renovations there and to bring the Community Learning Centre in, and to provide some, the paramedical services, and the whole Community Learning Centre concept. I think it's a great opportunity for growth and use of funding from those capital project funds that the state provided, as well as what the town is doing. So, any questions about my background or interest?
Thank you, Kim. Any questions from council members? Thank you. All right, that completes our interviews, we're now gonna move to Item 6 and take up appointments. Do I hear any resolutions?
We'll break it up. Motion to appoint Susan Mittendorf, Richard Morrissey, and Peter Swain to the Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favour?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Motion to appoint Kim Salisbury Keith to the Library Board of Trustees.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favour?
Aye.
All right, that passes. All right, that's now gonna move us to the Consent Agenda.
Yeah, so, could we just remove Item 7E from the consent agenda? It's about Main Street.
Yes, we can.
America, the cohort training.
Nope, that's enough. So, let's take up Consent Agenda Items 7, A, B, C, D, and F.
Motion to approve Item A, B, C, D, and F.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favour?
Aye.
All right, that passes. We're now gonna take up Consent Item, which has been removed, now it's a standalone Item 7E, Resolution authorising the Town of South Kingstown to apply for and if selected, participate in the Rhode Island Main Street Cohort and to pay $295 for an annual membership with Main Street America. Jim, gonna go to you on this?
Thank you. Back in October, many of us in this room attended the Grow Smart Rhode Island and Rhode Island Main Street Program, it's called Cohort Training, and Jamie Rabbit's here to get over the particulars on it, but I'll give you an executive summary, so you can understand what the question is. It's not about the $295, it's not about the, you know, the volunteers, it's about what is the pleasure of the council on how you wanna structure this committee? Do you want it to be all volunteer? Do you want it to have interviews done by the council for people appointed to this? It's really up to the council how strict you want it, or how loosely defined you want it. So what is this program, real quick? It's, it would be four to six volunteers representing like the economic development community, Main Street business, Wakefield Downtown Business Association general, South Kingston resident passionate about improving Main Street, Planning Department, and South Kingston Chamber of Commerce. And it would involve six full-day training sessions on Main Street America's four points, and there's a graph below that has what that is, and it's really about moving Main Street forward, economic development and so forth, but I'll turn it over to Jamie to get into specifics on this, and go over any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Manny. Again, Jim set the table for me, so again, this is one of the baby steps that the town is contemplating with regards to improving the economic viability and organizational structure of the Wakefield Main Street organizations. You have the Wakefield Downtown Group, you have the Chamber, you have the Town, you have a number of entities managing, talking about event planning, all the structures associated with Main Street. The council's invested a little over a million dollars in the facade program, we have another $350,000 invested on Main Street improvements, we got another $350,000 coming for additional Main Street improvements. So, the discussion is, is that there's a program with Main Street America and Grow Smart Rhode Island and Rhode Island Main Street, and they're offering an opportunity, in essence, to train the trainer, where they're having a competitive application process, looking for a number of communities within Rhode Island to step forward and be willing to participate in this training. To Mr. Manny's point, it is a commitment of six days between January and June, the expectations are at a minimum, one of those individuals who are part of the cohort team will attend all of those sessions. I think there's also an underlying expectation that if you're going to be a member of the cohort, that they would like you to attend all six sessions. It's six days of commitments, three during the week, three on the weekends. So again, Saturdays are precious. There are suggestions, and you have it in a memo that I wrote to Mr. Manny of having members of the business community, members of perhaps EDC, members of the Wakefield Business Association, as well as someone who's extremely passionate about the economic viability of Main Street and our downtowns within this community. To Mr. Manny's point, whether it's completely volunteer-driven without staff participation, or a combination of staff and volunteerism, that's completely up to the council, I stand before you to say, you know, do you want the Planning Department to be involved, or do you not? We can do it either way. I think one point of having the Planning Department involved is, we work for the town manager, town manager works for you, so we have responsibility to someone, and we have to report to individuals to keep everybody up to date and look at some consistency and continuity associated with the program. Now, not all volunteers may be here as the program goes far, but a department is usually part of the community and part of the structure within the town. One good note is, I did mention in the original memo that the, if you're selected as part of the cohort, there's a requirement to join Main Street America at a economic figure in there of $295. They're actually reducing that to $150, so we've saved $145 if we're selected as part of this program. So again, we serve at your leisure.
Thank you, Jamie.
Available answer questions.
So, my question, originally, it's not the $295, because I think even $295, it could be an incredible opportunity to train the cohort that we send. My question is, the additional trainings, is there additional cost to attend? Like, it seems like quite a deal if it only costs you $150 for six days.
So, the, yeah, training is, the cohort itself has no cost.
Okay.
In order to be, if you're selected, in order to move forward with the cohort, you need to become a member of Main Street America, and that would be at a reduced fee of $150. No additional cost to attend those six events.
What's the criterion for being selected?
There are, one is organizational and structural support from the community, business community, as well as boards, commissions, and council. So there is a section where they're weighing in on, please select all that apply to your team. City or town staff, elected officials, or members of boards and commissions as part of the team. So, you know, they probably have a matrix and will award additional points if the town is participating on the staff level. The next one is acknowledgement that the town staff or the town is aware of the application. So a support letter from council would be appreciated. One or more elected officials in the city or town in support of the application, which again, support from the council would be five. And then, city or town board or committee that's in support of it. I know the economic, we have representatives from EDC tonight, Susan Marcus has done a fairly substantial lift on the preliminary aspects of preparing an application, so again, EDC, I believe, is on board. I'm sure the Planning Board members attended that, to Mr. Manny pointed out, when they, Main Street came, Rhode Island Main Street came to Wakefield, the meeting was relatively well-attended by council members, Planning Board members, EDC Housing, as well as representatives from the Town Manager's Office and the Planning Department, so I think we had a good start to this program.
So if we vote to approve it, Jamie, should we talk about the makeup of the cohort members, or is that something to be decided later date? When do you need to get the application in?
The application is due December 1st, so we will work on that, I'll be getting the rest of this week, as well as tomorrow, and again, Susan Marcus has given us some language, needs to be fine-tuned, and we're limited to the amount of words in each section, so some were over right now, so we have to eliminate a few things. Again, I think right now, there's potential makeup of the cohort committee from a representative and member of the EDC, from a member of the South County Chamber of Commerce, two members from the Wakefield Business Association, a concerned citizen from Wakefield, and a Peacedale resident and person involved in small business development.
So you already have.
There's a mix there.
Sort of a recommended makeup of the committee. How did you solicit interest?
Exactly.
Prior to this coming to council for approval?
Primarily, the Economic Development Committee members have been talking to the business community.
Go ahead. I just wanted to say that I was at the meeting of the Grow Smart, and what was great about the meeting and the presentation was, South Kingstown is already doing this in Wakefield. The Town Council has already applied a lot of what they've already asked for through the ARPA spending, right, through the facade, through the work that we've done on the riverfront, right? All of this, all of these things that Grow Smart has asked folks to do, we're doing already, and they acknowledge that. They say, hey, you're already doing this, you're already doing a great job, and a lot of other communities are doing a good job. What this can kind of do is kind of hone our ability to see what we can do even better, right? So it wouldn't get in the way of anything, it's just, it kind of adds a finer perspective. And I had a one question for you on the baseline requirements on the second page of your memo, and it says, "Communities over 5,000 population must employ an FTE program director?"
So, one of the goals, long-term, of Main Street America is to have a Main Street coordinator. There are communities, when I was the Planning Director in Simsbury, Connecticut, we had a Main Street partnership program, they're accredited by Main Street America, they have a part-time coordinator, yet they're still accredited by Main Street. I think it's the objective that any Main Street partnership is funded to some extent and has some access to professional staff. Typically, it's a 501(c)(3) corporation who then is, looks at revenue and funding sources that hires their own staff. Most is not a municipal employee.
So, but could we qualify that metric through placing it in the FTE in the Planning Department, or that?
Typically, the 501(c)(3) is the employer of that person.
Okay.
Again, there's a recommendation for a full-time employee, most communities do not have that person full-time.
Okay, and I just wanted to let my councillors, fellow councillors, know that if we do need a council representative in the cohort, I'd be interested in serving if we need someone, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike. I read my ones.
The way I read the memo, it sounds like it's undefined how many people are necessarily in it. I think the suggestions that you've indicated in terms of Wakefield Business, Southern Rhode Island Chamber, the Economic Development Commission, that makes, all makes sense, particularly the private organizations are very, very active in this town. In terms of individuals, do we have to decide that tonight?
I think it could be potentially operated with recommendations through the Town Manager's Office, I think the difficulty is, the program requires a minimum of three, but to Mr. Maron's point, it didn't set an upper limit of that. I think they are allowing up to six, in essence, licenses or six people to access the cohort information, so I don't know if that's the upper range, but I think there's an opportunity, if you had seven or eight, to potentially have a few extras participate in the cohort, they may be able to attend the meeting, I don't know what access they will have to all of the program information.
So I'm glad I pulled this off, because this, we wouldn't have not had this conversation, and it sounds like you're putting forward the names with the application.
The, the structure of the application appears to require names, because they're asking for contact information.
Right, so, we don't have those names, and I, I, I mean, it's great that there's a very energetic person in Wakefield who wants to contribute, but my experience with volunteers and things like that, I'm just a little bit more reluctant to just say sure without knowing who all of these people are and how they plan to contribute, and I also wanted to add that, since there are six meetings, I'm hoping that we're gonna get an update at each juncture, at each of those opportunities, and maybe a culminating, and maybe a culminating presentation of what our next steps would be.
And that's one of my discussions I've had with the Town Manager about potentially having one of the departments in the Town Hall, because you can direct staff.
Yeah.
Through the Town Manager.
Yeah.
To prepare a memo for you. Volunteers have, you know, you're pulled in a million directions, but you can't order them to do something.
Yeah.
Right, they're volunteers.
So do you have the names, and do you wanna give them to us? I mean, I.
I provided some names to Mr. Manny that were provided to me by Susan Marcus.
So, I mean, considering the timing here, it's the Monday before Thanksgiving, the application's due by December 1. I'd rather not kill this, I think it's a good opportunity.
Yeah.
We have to be deferential, and as to who are the persons gonna serve in the cohort if we wanna move this forward, it sounds like there has been at least some deliberation in the community, at least the business community, as to who should serve on this. I think there should be some diversity as to, you know, EDC, Planning Board, South County Chamber of Commerce, things of that nature. It sounds like we have considered all that, which is good. We definitely should have a member of staff on, preferably you, Jamie, if possible.
Is it you, or is it Brian?
It would potentially be either me or Brian Wagner within our department, Brian's a principal planner at this point. Again, we would look to balance workload, what we would, we don't have dates, we don't have locations.
Right.
And really, it's, the work week isn't the issue, it's the commitment of the three Saturdays.
Right, so.
The only thing I would say on that, if it happened to be Brian and he couldn't make a meeting, Brian and I went, I would report everything to Brian.
Oh, no, I understand.
Because that's our job, right, is to communicate within our office.
So, I appreciate what Rory said about diversity of, of members, I just wanna make sure that there's balance of gender, and if possible, any. and if, if possible, any minority-owned business so that we don't have, you know, a very one-look, look of our cohort. Do you know?
Right now, of the six members, we have a balance-
Of?
-three male and three female.
Okay. And, and is there a women-owned business owner there, or is it? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. I just, I just think representation matters. And when we can take steps to make sure that it's inclusive, we should.
And one of the key things I'm appreciative is two members of the village, Wakefield Village Association, being willing to not only donate their time to the association, to potentially donate their time to the cohort. You know, a small business owner, six days means a lot, you know?
So are we not going to get the names?
I think you should share the names with us, for sure.
The name submitted to me tonight came from Susan Marcus, who was really facilitative of this, this meeting. So first name was Kirk Brown, member of the Town's Economic Development Committee, who also lives off Main Street and will be the point person for the cohort as it gets started. Joe Veely, the head of the South County Chamber of Commerce. Sarah Breslin and Jackie French. These two representatives are volunteers at the Wakefield Village Association, which is applying to become a 501(c)(3). Karen DeSilva will share the spot with Sarah Breslin and Jackie French. She's also a Wakefield resident who lives off Main Street with an experience in historic preservation. Josh Daly, Peacedale resident with expertise in small business development, including sustainable food policies and an interest in applying his learning to other villages in South Kingstown. And then, once again, you know, I talked to Jamie about, you know, I would like to have planning, or respectfully request planning involved in it. And Brian would, would be the first choice. And then Jamie, they could work with each other to pick which Saturdays they could go to.
Those, those sound, I feel so much better. I know Josh Daly's resume pretty well and certainly know Joe and the Wakefield Village. That makes me feel a lot better. Sorry.
So I got an email from Susan Marcus on October 3rd saying thank you for joining the meeting and your participation. And, and then I emailed back saying I'd be interested in participating. And I didn't hear anything back since then. And so why are we getting this on November 26th? 24th.
Again, Susan Marcus reached out to people. I've been in contact with the town manager's office on whether there was an intent to move forward with an application on December 1st.
Yeah.
So again, I, members of the public are contacted. The council, members of the public can contact me. I go, I'm going through the town manager's office. And again, we're coming before you tonight in a more organized, organized manner than we would have been two, three weeks ago.
So if I'm giving the consensus of the council, the, the names seem to be acceptable. And if there's no upper limit to participation and selection for the cohort is enhanced by having support of the council and/or a representative from the council. Jay's already indicated his interest. I would move to approve this with the appointed names, including Jay.
Okay, we have a motion.
Yeah, I-
I'll second that. Now we're in discussion. Go ahead.
So I'm glad I pulled it off consent agenda because this was a very helpful thing, right? And I just, and I, and I don't want to focus on anyone not doing the right thing, but it would have been helpful. I think it's a great idea. I wish I knew in October that this was where it was happening. Maybe Susan was, you know, taking the lead on doing the application and that's why it's coming so slowly to us. Because I wish we would have known and then it would have been a consent agenda just passed right through. But we had to learn about it at the table. And that's something that I'm trying actively to change because I feel like that's what takes a long time is that we're not necessarily getting the information proactively ahead of time and then we can't move things forward. So that's why I feel like we could have done better.
I think after the meeting in October, I did send an email to the town council to make them aware that we attended this session. But this came to me a couple of weeks ago, saying that December 1st was the deadline. Was unsure whether it was going to be all volunteer, whether it was going to be involved by the council. I requested that, to Jamie, that it goes before the council because obviously there is an importance to this. But we, we gave it, we gave it to you in the manner that we got it, in between two meetings.
And, and just for clarity, Susan Marcus sent that email out in October. The next contact made to our department, Susan, was two weeks into the month of November. So when the program, back in October, the application process, all of that has not been flushed or developed. In the incoming time, that was flushed out. Deadlines were made, commitments, staff, conversations with the town manager's office were undertaken.
All right, thank you, Jamie. So we do have a motion. This has been a second. It's to appoint those persons recommended by the town staff to the cohort with the inclusion of Councilman Jay Wedgemont. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, that passes. Thank you, Jamie.
Just for clarity, that includes the planning department?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there enough clarity in that motion, Mike? Ursillo?
It's very clear.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, we're now going to move up Communication Item 14B. An email dated November 19, 2025, from Christopher Little, Chair, South Kingstown Housing Authority, requesting a resolution in support of the agency's application to Rhode Island Housing for low-income housing tax credits for the Champagne Heights Affordable Housing Development as requested by Councilmember Wedgemont. Chris, you're welcome.
Hi. Thank you for listening to me again tonight. This is the third time we're coming before you, asking for a resolution of support. You may remember, we were back before you in September and we gave a presentation of the modifications that have been made to the design from a year ago. Modifications that were made to accommodate direction from Rhode Island Housing that we needed to reduce some cost. Thereafter, we went to the planning board and to initially seek a determination as to whether Mr. Rabbit would have the authority to approve those modifications as minor. And they did vote that he would. And we, he under, he's working with us very closely to make sure that we can have the modifications approved by him in time to make our application funding deadline, which is December 18th, to Rhode Island Housing. So tonight, we're just asking if you would be so kind as to give a resolution of support, which is very important for our funding application, which would go to Rhode Island Housing on December 18th. I had submitted a copy of your resolution from last year and also the cover letter that went, which simply with those would be just fine if they could be updated in terms of dates, if the council would be so willing to do so.
All right, thank you, Chris. Go ahead.
Is there any benefit of sending it to the speaker as well? Or any of the other government officials?
The speaker is strongly supportive of our proposal. He's met with us. Our, our legislators are very strongly supportive of us. We've met with the Secretary of Housing. She says she loves our project. And we've also met with Rhode Island Housing and reviewed it with them. We've heard very encouraging terms. And we are cautiously optimistic that maybe this year will be the year that we finally get the approval.
That's great because I know all of us up here, or I don't want to speak for all of us, but I think we're all really very happy about this. So very much supportive.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Chris? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Item 14B.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is going to move us to Item 9, Public Comments. Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, I invite you to come on up. We just ask that you introduce yourself. We're going to limit you to five minutes. When you begin speaking, this clock will begin counting down from five. You can use it as a way to gauge the timing. And we're going to do first segment, 30 minutes of public comment. Once that's, that's exhausted, we're going to move to new business. Town manager report, get through that rather quickly, then come back to public comment for anyone who didn't get a chance to speak. With that said, first come, first served. Come on up. Come on up, Bob. Oh, Bob, you got to speak, speak on the mic if you're going to talk.
You made a promise that you were going to get up and speak at the meetings.
I can't, you should be getting up. Anyway, Bob Trager, South Kingstown resident for many years. This is a special day for me, or maybe for other people more than me because it's my birthday.
Happy birthday.
So I, I fully intended to give you guys a hard time today and ask you for an extra five minutes because it's my birthday. But I might not be able to speak 10 minutes. I don't know what I'm capable of doing. I know I can have one-hour conversations with very interesting people, though. So I guess I could cover it. I, I might get going. It depends what I get going on. Just yesterday, I talked to the head of the ski area, Brenton Woods, for over an hour. And we had a great talk. There's no way to sum it up in a couple of seconds. Something that I've been thinking about regularly, and I think I might have mentioned it a couple of times. It might sound silly to some extent, but I think about choice, making choices. We're all making choices. I personally believe that we're all a product of our choices and circumstances that we've been in as individuals. So everybody in this room has their own experiential field. And I think about choice, circumstance, and time a lot. I try to blend it into my thinking about anything else. And I told you a few times while I'm here, why do I come here? Well, it's a choice, isn't it? Well, internally, I understand in my own existence that it's an important choice. Now, whether you're not here, whether you're here or not, this is a circumstance that choices are made for the town of South Kingstown. And it's also relates to the whole thing, the whole country, the whole world to a certain extent. And some of the things that have gone on in recent weeks, in recent months, are so far off track in my mind that individuals should not stand by and just, what's the word, just be apathetic about it? This is not apathy. You can't be apathetic, apathetic about somebody blowing people out of the ocean in a boat. I call it murder. And I call it murder that these hands and this mind and my job and my taxes are going towards. But that's not the main issue. There are some things that are cut and dry with, in my mind, at least. They might not be in others. And I've talked to several people recently. Hmm, they can accept it. Well, they have guns on those boats. Oh, well, those people, those people, they don't even know who these people are. They could be hired hands. They could be hired by somebody and they say, if you don't take this boat here and there or other, we'll, we'll kill your family. There's a lot of, I mean, I'm just using that as a throwing it out. Here's one thing I haven't heard one thing about. I'm going to focus on it for a couple of minutes, just all. That the, these things have been done. They've been about 70 times now it's happened. We've killed people. We've splattered drugs all over the ocean. We've created oil slicks when all that had to be done is stop these boats and take the people into custody and take the drugs and get rid of them, burn them somewhere, whatever you do with them. Not one, I only heard a hint of it on one of the C-SPAN things that I was watching recently. A hint of environmental, the environmental aspect of it. So if, if we're not thinking about the human beings that are being disposed of, I mean, it's, it's like the Holocaust, for crying out loud. It's wrong. And you got me, you got me started with the, the due process. But this is all part of the due process. We're still not doing anything about it. We're not doing enough, anywhere near enough. They're doing, they're trying. There's a lot more. That advertisement that's just been put on TV, don't follow unjust orders. Now, has anybody been in the military? I've been in the military four years. Anybody else in the military? Well, you know, it's a difficult subject. You get an order, you got to follow it. But there are orders that are over and above that important military chain of command office, obey, obey your orders. There is a line. We've crossed the line in this country. The line has been crossed heavily. We got to do something about it. And this is about all I can do because I'm no good with the internet. Not that that would do any good either. But I mean, I, I mean, I don't send notes to my senators. I'm thinking about calling them and talking to them. But I know what they do when I listen to them. I've listened to White House, I've listened to, I've listened to them talk. I've never heard them be in a, in a place that I didn't like. So we're lucky. Because I heard a lot of other, a lot of other-
Bob, I know it's your birthday. You are a little over. You're the first one to go.
You're not going to give me the 10, are you? No, I see the-
If you want to stick around-
Not even, not even me. Not even anybody who's getting up a pelvic formant. What if, what if somebody said, hey, give him my five minutes? I'm not going to take it. I'm done. I'm done in a way.
It's non-assignable.
I'm never going to be done, though. I'm never going to be, I'm going to say one more thing. It's about your statement on the next thing on the agenda at the bottom, about the Discussion Group for Youth. Have I got it right? I, I, it's only one line there.
A youth advisory board. A youth advisory board.
It's about a youth advisory board, Bob.
Yeah. Well-
Could you say it briefly, Bob? You are the first one to go.
The more this council can stimulate discussion in the community and the youth and, uh, youth get involved, the better this world is going to be. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Happy 50th birthday, Bob. 50, right?
38.
Well, I have a birthday party at the, I'm terrible at weddings. I didn't have one serious birthday.
You didn't invite us. We would have come.
Drinks on the council, it sounds like. No, no problem. Sorry, I, Mike Aggers have been out of town for a couple of weeks and then I had a knee replaced a couple of weeks ago. So I haven't really been in touch. But I did want to make sure that we had a moment of silence for Henry Thayer, who had passed away several weeks ago. He was the vice chair of the Economic Development Committee. He retired from the committee in, in March. And of course, he was active in the, the 300th Anniversary Committee and was born here, raised here, raised his own family here, actively participated in the community. And I always think of him as Mr. South Kingstown. So I just wanted to observe a moment of silence for Henry Thayer. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak? All right, we're going to move on. Going to move down to new business. Item A, Rich Burberry, come on up.
Thank you. So this is with regard to a bid award for our chemical storage facility at the wastewater treatment plant and also some improvements at the Silver Lake Pump Station. At the plant, about a year ago, we started seeing some problems. It was Kathy that brought it to my attention. We, we put out to bid some engineering work. The hypo, the hypochlorite tank, the sodium hypo day tank and the, um, the sodium bisulfite tanks were failing. The double-wall tank, the interior wall was failing a bit. There was, um, there was liquid getting into, in between the two, the two walls. And, and we were cleaning it out and doing well. But it's, it's, it's gotten much, much worse through the design process. So what we decided over the last maybe two months or so is just put it out to bid. So this is an award, a bid to heart engineering for $1.712 million to be paid from the Wastewater Capital Reserve with a portion to be reimbursed by our wastewater partners, that being Narragansett.
capital reserve with a portion to be reimbursed by our wastewater partners, that being Narragansett and URI. There is some of this work, $500,000 worth going to the Silver Lake Pump Station. We have to replace some pumps, some piping. We figured this is sort of, it helps with the economy of the project by having, it's effectively a lot of similar type work. Put it all out together, that way we get a better pricing on it.
All right, thank you, Rich. Any questions?
Please.
Help with the mic on.
So in the memo, it's not accounted for in the CIP, so can you just explain where you're gonna get the?
So.
I know some is portioned out, but our portion.
Our portion, so it'll all be, what we're gonna do is we're gonna pay for it from the capital reserve. And then we'll be reimbursed, based on flow to the wastewater plant from URI and Narragansett. The Silver Lake will be reimbursed by solely URI in South Kingstown because no Narragansett flow goes to Silver Lake. The work happening with the hypo tanks, that'll be reimbursed by, that'll include Narragansett as well. But we'll be paying for this out of the capital reserve, just to front the dollars, and then we'll get reimbursed from the partners.
And do you recall how much is in the capital reserve?
I believe it is in that, I mean, the last time that I discussed it with Brian, our finance director, it was in that 11 or 12 million dollar range.
What did you say?
11 or 12 million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve item 10A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
It's gonna bring us to item 10B. Wendy, come on up.
Good evening. All right. Before you today is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to enact legislation clarifying Rhode Island General Law 44-4-2, that in our town, all buildings on leased land are taxed as real estate regardless of whether the lease is recorded or not. The resolution is pretty self-explanatory. Should I read it into the record? Do I need to? No? You all read it? Okay. If we don't clarify this issue legislatively now, this argument will continue to escalate in the courts, and either the courts will force our hand or we can decide as a town that we will clarify a practice that we have been implementing for a very long time now. And this will leave us in a better position to avoid large judgments in the future and a disruption to future year budgets. The current state of the law on this question is fairly open. The town has taken the position that because the bills of sales are recorded to transfer ownership and leasehold interest in the land, it's implied that the lease, whether recorded or not, is not relevant. You can see the verbiage in the draft statute, provided however, and I'll read it verbatim, that in the town of South Kingstown, buildings on leased land are, for the purpose of taxation, deemed real estate and shall be taxed to the owner of the building as real estate whether or not the leases are in writing or recorded. Just to give you a little snapshot, real estate is by IAAO standards, which is our international assessing group nationwide. Real estate is immobile and ownership must be registered in official records. Therefore, all buildings, including cottages, on leased land are assessed in use as real estate. And I think we can all agree that a cottage most likely is probably pretty difficult to move yearly unlike a trailer. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 44-5-6, we use fair market value at ad valorem or a value in use tax, which is what we've historically done in South Kingstown, and we would like to continue to do per assessment mythology, and we would like the law to match our historic and future ad valorem practices regarding buildings on leased land, which is why this resolution is before you today.
Thank you. Mike Ursula, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Now, I assume this proposed amendment would be given to legislators along with our resolution. Just strategically speaking, is it better to have a carve-out specific to South Kingstown? I mean, is there a way to do this where it's not specific to South Kingstown?
That is correct, but there is concern. Whenever you make it apply throughout the state, you run into the issue of, for one reason or another, some towns or cities not wanting it. So I think it should start this way, and then depending on the feedback, it always could be a sub-A amended.
So potentially legislators representing other districts, it won't matter to them. They're more okay to go along with it, whereas if it were more generally applicable, those towns that didn't want this change would have their legislators vote against it.
Now, I will say, I think this is the type of legislation that every town would love to have, but my advice still is to let's begin with us and then see what the response is. That's why Wendy's here tonight. We wanna get it prefiled, give everyone plenty of time to review it, and if it needs to be subayed, we'll do that later.
All right.
Great.
Any questions, bud?
I was gonna have almost this identical comment, Mike, that the language of the existing statute is just creating confusion, and Wendy has been in front of us before about litigation over this language. But if the state just took out the wording where the leases are in writing and recorded, there wouldn't be a problem.
That is exactly correct. And my hope is that legislative council or someone will recognize that, but let's start it with just us.
Well, that could be the sub-A.
So when this resolution gets approved, I'm sure it will be, it gets sent to where? How does it travel?
Well, exactly where it goes to our delegation, but.
Goes to our delegation.
And I believe to the governor, too? I don't know.
If the council so chooses, the default would typically, we would send it to all of our legislators unless I am told otherwise to do so.
Well, do we wanna send it to other people? And do we, like, wanna have, is there a cover letter sent, like with Wendy's, some Wendy's remarks incorporated?
We send a cover letter that just describes what the council had decided and what the purpose of the resolution and the request is.
Okay.
If I could respond, my answer, Deb, to your question would be, let's just begin by sending it only to our legislators.
Okay.
And if others wanna jump on the bandwagon and co-sponsor the bill, I'd be thrilled by that, but let's not muddy the waters upfront. Let's make it clean for us.
So it's like five people, right? Sizniewski, Gu, seven?
And talking to Jim, I can also send it out to the Clerks Association as well if you would like me to do that. I can, the City Clerks Association, I can send that out.
The assessors. Would it go to the assessors?
We can do that, too.
I would agree with Mike. Send it to our local legislators only. I think otherwise we're inviting potential opposition.
I'm with Mike Maron on this.
Can, is there any follow-up? I mean, do we need to have, like, a conversation with the senators and representatives to make sure that this gets followed through? Do we need to do any other things?
I could have a conversation with each representative and senator, just let them know what passed tonight, if it passes, and that we are looking for support.
Right, because I kinda just want this to happen.
And Mike, what committee would this likely be taken up in? Okay.
It's not judiciary.
All right.
Jim is saying most likely Legislative Affairs.
Oh. Okay.
Motion to approve item 10B.
Second.
Second.
We're gonna motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Mike. All right, it's now gonna bring us to item C. It's a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise an order of notice of public hearing. Mike, you wanna just talk about this briefly? I know this involves repealing the former short-term registration.
Right, because as you know, the council adopted an ordinance relative to rental registration that was not limited to short-term in our zoning ordinance. Now that that's adopted, we need to simply eliminate this old ordinance. That's all, we're simply repealing the old ordinance, nothing more. But since it was adopted as an ordinance, it has to be repealed as an ordinance.
Motion to approve item 10C.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. It's gonna move us to item D, a resolution to reconsider the five-year extension of the electricity supply agreement originally awarded on October 14, 2025 with Next Era Energy Services to provide electricity for South Kingstown Community Electricity Aggregation Program as requested by Council Vice President Mike Maron. Mike, go ahead.
We'd originally taken this up. Sorry. We had originally taken this up on October 14th. Next, uh, Don, Next Era, Good Energy had sent in Patrick Roche, and Mark had also talked with us, as well as Dawn. After we had approved the five-year extension, I had some concerns and wanted to have a motion to reconsider, mostly so that we can fill in the public record about aspects of going for a five-year extension on a contract now that doesn't even expire for two more years. I went back over the tape from October 14th. I do have some additional questions. Mike, tell me, do we need a formal motion to reconsider to just talk about this?
That would come at the end. Right now, the previous motion is in place, only if at the end of this discussion, someone makes a motion to change it. So you don't need it upfront.
Okay.
All right, so we have Mark Russo. We also have representatives of Good Energy. We've had some discussions at the previous meeting with Dawn Uer. We believe she is legal counsel to Good Energy, representing, you know, making representations as to what's going into the due diligence for finding suppliers, how the municipal aggregation program works. We believe you guys have been informed as to some of our discussions at the previous meeting, so we hopefully have some response from you. So go ahead.
Yes, it's Mark Russo, Facilities Director. I'm also the staff liaison to the community electricity program and also a staff liaison to Good Energy. We have Philip Carr, he's the Managing Director of the New England Region, and Rafita Ramon, she is the Sustainability and Strategist for the New England area. So I'll just turn it over to Philip, and he can answer your questions.
All right, good evening, Council President. Thank you for your time this evening. Yes, we are here to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for having us here tonight, here with Rafita.
All right, I think to start us off, you know, one of the things we wanna make sure is clear and transparent and out there, what sort of diligence went into identifying the supplier to use for these electricity supply contracts? We just wanna make sure it's not, you know, just use the supplier you've been using over time, or whether it actually involves a process of, you know, checking rates, seeing what's out there, ensuring we get the best rate. So what do you got for us there?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we did is, and I should probably go back to when we first selected Next Era in the first place, Rhode Island has a fairly sophisticated procurement methodology at the state level, so we actually did an initial RFP for procurement approach, like what is your strategy? And we had some, a couple of responses back then. This would be in, I think, 2022, and Next Era was the company that had the best approach. I'll give you some context. So in some states, like Massachusetts, so give you an idea, so we, Good Energy, we, as client communities, we're pretty much, most of the communities from the Connecticut border all the way up to the Cape in Mass. And so, so we, in Massachusetts, generally, we do fixed-rate products, right? It's just, it's very simple. We have competitive bids, but there's only three or four competitive suppliers in the country that we work with. Important to make the distinction between all the other sort of offers you may get in the mail, whatever. Only a small handful of companies have the financial capacity and the operational capacity to handle aggregation programs. So, so for example, in Mass, we do, it's very simple, it's a fixed-rate bid between pre-qualified suppliers and for specific terms, and it's pretty obvious which is the winner by the lowest rate. Now, the way it works in Rhode Island is, in order to have an effective rate which can consistently beat the utility rate here, we had to go out into the market and look for something more sophisticated. So we essentially went back to a similar process for our RFP. We said, we once again, we went out into the market and said, right, we would like to verify that the approach that we've been using is still effective. Are there any suppliers out there that think we can do, that think they can do better against the utility rate? And just to recap, I believe we have beaten the local utility rate consistently since the beginning of the launch, whilst also incorporating 5% additional local renewable energy from local projects. So we went out into the market, we had two respondents. Remember, there's only really four, four applicable suppliers. One was Constellation and one was Next Era. Constellation, these are Fortune 200 companies. Constellation is an excellent company. In fact, they are the incumbent supplier for all of the, we have a buying group across the south coast of Massachusetts. They, we felt that the approach that Next Era put forward was best place to continue to provide value when compared to the utility rate. It was a competitively run bid with, with two responses from two exceptionally qualified suppliers, and Next Era had the best product. Sir.
Can you describe a little bit more what that process was that led you to that conclusion?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we structured a bid that, so bid documents which were submitted to the suppliers, and those responses were submitted back to us in a timely fashion by the suppliers, and they were scored on different criteria relating to renewable aspects, track record, and, yes, so it was run in a, we ran a lot of different bids, so it was run according to our bidding protocols.
Okay. Given the fact that you've got Constellation in Southern Massachusetts, and you've assessed that they're the best for that area, and you've assessed that Next Era is better for Rhode Island.
Yes, sir.
What's the difference between the utility programs that led you to that?
Yeah, and that's a good question. So the, the, the way that procurement at the state level takes place in Massachusetts is simply not sophisticated. So the differential between the summer and the winter rates in Rhode Island is far higher than the differential you generally get in Massachusetts. We've seen in Massachusetts that a fixed-rate product that doesn't change at all. So for example, if you were in, say, Fall River or New Bedford in one of our programs, you would have one fixed rate that doesn't change summer or winter with our programs, and they've been proven, they've been proven to be successful over time. But when we sort of looked at that approach here, the differential over summer and winter would be very high, and that we felt that that would lead to excessive migration away from the program and also would, I think politically, be more difficult. Aggregation is kind of a political product, right? So elected officials from a town do their due diligence on a consultant to implement a program that allows residents in a community to buy an aggregate in a safe and responsible way. Say safe and responsible way because in many ways, aggregation is the evolution of the deregulated retail market for residents. So the individual rate payer gets, you know, offers in the mail, and they can stick with the utility, they get offers in the mail, and that can be an opportunity, but it also can be a bit of a risk. There are some reputable suppliers, and there's some suppliers where you really have to be very careful and look at what you're doing and look at the small print. What aggregation does is it allows residents to, it kind of protects them to operate in competitive markets, knowing that their elected officials working with staff members have crafted a responsible program. So the reason I'm saying that is so when we think about the difference between the two states, when you, if we had you in a fixed-rate product in this state and we didn't see an equally sophisticated approach from the other. sophisticated approach from the other supplier, which was Constellation is an incredible company. But in this particular RFP response, we felt that the approach that we got from Next Era would, would, which essentially tracks the utility rate whilst, but staying slightly less expensive. There's not a guarantee it's always going to be less expensive in the future, but our goal is to be less expensive. So it's, it's, it's the best fit we felt this time around. Having said that, you know, we are always looking for the best solution. We'd be, we would have been thrilled if a new, if one of our suppliers had come up with a new product. We, it's a very healthy process to go out and check the market like that. But at this moment in time, we didn't feel that that was the right way to go.
This isn't directly to do with the contract, but given that explanation, one of the questions I assume my colleagues get, and I know I've gotten, is complaints from residents about the difference between the summer and winter rates in Rhode Island. Is that a function of our approach, our, meaning the Public Utilities Commission in Rhode Island, our approach to regulation as opposed to like the example you used in Massachusetts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure I can comment on, on, on the, the auctions run by, run by the state. But we, we just do our best to match a product that will provide value against that.
Okay. With respect to Next Era's performance, not just their selection from this RFP process over the summer, but regionally or nationally, where do you assess them as a supplier?
So yeah, that, Next Era is like a premier supplier. So what do I mean by that? So they, they, in the world of aggregation, they only have three, uh, three aggregation programs. So what does that mean? So, so they have three buying groups that they provide power for. One is the Cape by Compact has its own buying group, most of the communities in the Cape, an organization called NOPEC in Northern Ohio, and also our buying group. So, so it was kind of, they're, they're really, they're the largest, I believe, largest renewable energy developer in the country. They are, I mean, they regularly get voted as one of the best places to work, apparently. But, you know, as far as, as far as aggregation is concerned, they're, we worked hard to initially to get them interested in the bid. So part of our role as a consultant is to, is to identify an opportunity, identify where we think we can provide value, and then go out into the market and bring the most responsible, most sophisticated suppliers to work hard for you, right? So, so we were happy to be able to get them into the market. And one of the reasons we were able to do that was because of your size, the combined size of the buying group. And the buying group, buying group looks like it's growing. We just had, you know, had a great meeting with, with two or three more communities recently that looked like they're going to move forward. So, so yeah, they, they specialize in large buying groups and, and they would not bid on just one or two smaller programs. So yeah, sorry, I'm talking too long. It's a great company.
So the, how you went through the RFP process was part of what I felt needed a little bit more information for the public's benefit. The other part of it was the explanation that we were given October fourteenth with respect to still having two years left on the existing contract and then asking for five years. Now, Dawn also came back to our November seventh meeting, I think it was, and gave some further explanation that we hadn't, or at least I hadn't absorbed before, about the bargaining strength that comes from this approach. And if you can address that a bit in terms of what the overall strategy is. And I, I do get that the more the program grows, the larger the numbers you've got of people participating, the better the opportunity is to reduce rates in negotiating with Rhode Island Electric. And then there's also the, the second aspect of it that she started to address then was the, the fact that this five-year contract with the seven participating towns, you still have Barrington to consider, which I think is next week?
Yes, sir. That's right.
I think that's what she had said. So if you can talk about that a bit, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, um, so the, the reason, the reason we're doing this two years before is because the way, we have to mimic the way that the state auctions operate, right? And they buy, they buy in certain tranches, essentially up to twenty-four months out, rolling at a given moment in time, right? So we need to stay close to that buying so that we can maintain our consistent sort of advantage of, if, if we get out of sync with their buying and they end up having one low purchase and then we buy higher than them, then necessarily the rate we pass through will end up maybe being higher than the utility rate. So that's why it's two years out. The, the five-year extension is, we generally do these contracts in, in, in five-year increments. And that is what we did to start with. But I do understand the, 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 the sort of need for clarification about why we're doing this now, two years ahead of time. That, that is the reason is because we have to stay level with the way that the utility is approaching.
And the more towns you get and the more people participating from each town, the more leverage you have.
Yeah, that is absolutely right. What, what you're getting as part of a group is phenomenal leverage. And, and, and we are, we work that leverage pretty firmly with the suppliers.
Last question. You had mentioned earlier about the, the reliability of suppliers being an important part of the consideration. And I gather Next Era is, because of their size, you, you don't have to worry about the reliability of the supply.
Yes, sir.
But if, if people choose other suppliers, the potential is there for problems with the program.
Sorry, it's, sir, what was the last thing you said, sir?
Well, let me, let me put it down to the individual level. As you said, people get offers in the mail all the time from these programs, use us as your supplier. But you don't necessarily know what you're getting. And part of your role as the towns agent and the seven towns agent is to make sure that the supplier that you choose or you recommend to us is rock solid.
Hundred percent. Yes, sir. And what I would say, you know, we take your business very seriously. Like, you know, it's an honor for us to serve you and, and we live and breathe this. And I personally probably been involved with more aggregation programs than any other consultant in the country. And we work very hard to structure programs that will be successful.
Thank you very much.
And sorry, Rafita, I feel like you've come all this way. Maybe you want something you mentioned, mentioned about the renewables or anything? I don't know.
We, we also may have more questions up here.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
So any other questions from council members?
So the RFP program that, that you referred to, was that done in twenty twenty-two? Has that been done since then or?
Yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am. And that's what we did just now. We, we just went out to the market again and, and ran, ran a similar process to, to just verify that the approach we have for buying is still effective. And so that's what we did in August this year.
So are we able to see that information or is that something that we could sort of take a look at?
Yes. So we did do, we did do a presentation, we did a presentation to staff on the findings of, of the, of the RFP. Yes, we did. So, yeah, I'm not sure how, how, I don't know, some advice on that?
I, I guess, you know, one other question that I, that I have is about the renewable energy. That's very important. And so I just want to know that how, you know, how Next Era is reliably and definitively providing renewable energy to us in South Kingstown? So can you answer that? Is it through solar? Is it, is it through like, you know, water? Some of those things or how does it work?
So, um, Next Era, like other suppliers and utilities as well, they have to follow a system called the renewable energy, renewable portfolio standard that they have to meet a basic minimum of renewable energy that needs to, and for that percentage is thirty-four percent for twenty twenty-five and about forty-one percent for the next year. And it's a combination of solar, wind, and I think hydropower. So it's, it's a, it's a, like, it's based on the Rhode Island, it's a state standard that they have to meet. So, and based on that, we have like four products for South Kingstown. So South Kingstown, the default product meets that state standard and adds five percent additional renewable energy. The basic product has that baseline and there's a fifty percent and hundred percent where they add fifty percent and hundred percent more renewable energy.
And we can see, see that sort of, I, I just want to make sure that there's something to back up those numbers, that we have like proof that this is how.
So they're tracked by this system called renewable energy certificates that for every megawatt hour of energy, one certificate is retired annually. So there is definitely a system that's backing this up.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Just a couple of quick questions. So in two years before the start of our five-year extension, how many municipalities will be participating in the program?
So originally from May twenty twenty-three, in this buying group, we've had seven communities that are actively participating. And we're also launching North Kingstown's program, which is launching on January twenty twenty-six. And we also have Bristol and Middletown that are kind of approved by the PUC process, but they're just in the process of signing the ESA as of now.
So we can speculate that in two years from now, we'll have not seven, but nine municipalities and hopefully more, if you're, if you're doing the right job there, right?
Yes. Nine to ten or more, yes.
Okay. Because the more we have together, the, the better we have for negotiating with the market, which as you've mentioned and also abstained from mentioning, the Rhode Island market is strange, or different, I should say, from, than different places, which is why you have to do more of an exotic thing here. And I'm glad that you're walking us through this because we, my fellow counselors and I did have questions and we appreciate it. Is LNG considered a renewable energy in your department? Looked like natural gas?
No.
It is not?
Natural gas is not considered renewable energy.
That's good because it's not. But sometimes it is considered in the, in the, the bridge of moving away from fossil fuels, right? Is LNG, people, people do say that sometimes in the energy field, meaning that you move away from coal.
That's nuclear energy, but not necessarily natural gas, I guess.
Well, the shale, the barrens would beg the, beg the differ with you, but it's okay. No big deal. I'm glad that it's, it's not. I have no more questions. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. I got a few questions. I want to come back to a few things you've already talked about. You talked about how you issued an RFP in twenty twenty-two, then recently issued another one in August twenty twenty-five. I just want to, you know, come back to, it sounds like in your opinion, there's only two suppliers who provided responses to the RFP that are capable of handling the supply of electricity to this municipal aggregation program. And those two are Constellation and Next Era. And then you also talked a little bit about the more sophisticated product that Next Era was able to offer, sort of gave it the edge over Constellation. You mentioned, you know, made it politically easier to do. But I also want to ask you, you know, I know we see large differentials, summer versus winter in rates. You said Constellation in Massachusetts, they have a fixed rate, you know, year-round. So summer, winter, same rate. When you look at sort of the net cost on a, let's say, an annual basis, would you say that it's a cheaper alternative with Next Era as compared to Constellation? So that sophisticated product actually yields better results than Constellation would for our municipal aggregation program?
That's, that's a good question. I would, I would say, I have to be careful to say this. So I think, I would say it's, there's less risk of you being underwater with the Next Era product. Underwater, sorry. Underwater mean, mean losing money compared to utility rate. Because we weren't presented with a similar product that can track the state's auction from, from the other respondent, which is Constellation in this space. So it would have felt a little bit more like a shot in the dark, which, which there, there is some value in stability, for sure.
So better predictability, more certainty?
Yes, sir.
You need sort of that, less risk to perceive of the program this magnitude and then so many years out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right. I also, you know, I want to come back to something mentioned, the source, the renewable energy. Just want to get an idea, when we talk about that, where is this energy coming from? When I say that, I mean like you got a windmill, that's a form of renewable energy generating type activity. I know there's other sources of activity. Can you give us examples? And then is this local Rhode Island renewable energy? And can you just elaborate that further so we can understand it? And assume that, you know, we are not renewable energy experts and so that, you know, say it in a way in which, you know, it's easy to understand if you could.
So most of the renewable energy from, in New England comes locally from New England and also some places in New York and Canada. And so the voluntary renewable energy that this program has also comes from a nonprofit called Green Energy Consumers Alliance, and they only source locally. So there's about two windmills, I think, in Rhode Island. I think one in Providence and another in Coventry. And the solar, the solar comes from North Providence, Johnston, and West Greenwich. So I think they have like solar arrays there. So all the renewable energy, especially the voluntary ones, definitely come from local sources in Rhode Island.
So the two major sources of local renewable energy is?
Wind and, and solar, yes.
And solar panels?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other than that, just to be, you know, become familiar with?
Um, some, I think hydropower as well, like, so that's also, I think, one of their sources.
That's, what is that?
That's like water, like comes from water power.
All right. Thank you.
One thing I, I just want to go back to is, as you said, that, that aggregation is a, is a political product. And I guess that's sort of the thing that really I, I'm stuck on when, when I look about, look up about Next Era. And I just wonder if you can tell me what you mean by that?
Yeah, sorry. So it's, it's, what I mean by that is it's, for example, if we were buying for your commercial, sorry, if we were buying for your commercial industrial accounts, your, your main concern as it relates to performance would be the budgetary impact on the town's finances. Whereas in, in this scenario, you're, the reality is it affects the finances of the residents and businesses in the town with the oversight of elected officials and staff. So that's why I say broadly speaking is we, we take into account the fact that this is a high visibility product is what I'm trying to say. That's awful.
Okay. The, the, the use of that, that phrase, political product, really sort of set me off on a, another whole line of exploration.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you both for coming in. My purpose in requesting the additional information was to make sure that the council was doing its due diligence. I appreciate the explanation, not just at the, of the final decision and recommendation of the council, but also how you got there. I don't think we had all of that October fourteenth, and I appreciate the opportunity to hear all of and I appreciate the opportunity to hear all of that, uh, come in. I don't see a need for a motion to reconsider. Mike, tell me if we need to do anything.
You need not do anything.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the information. We appreciate it and happy to continue on with the municipal aggregation through good energy and, uh, through the use of NextEra energy as a supplier. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So this has been really good because many times I think we take votes on things and we feel uncomfortable and we want to bring them back to the table. So now I think we all understand that we could reach out to the solicitor or to Jim and the contract wouldn't be signed and we could revisit the, the, the issues. I think that's what I'm taking away, that there's a process for that. Am I correct?
I don't know that we want to get into this, but we talked about this last time. There was no contract to sign.
Yeah. So in general, whenever the council makes a decision, if someone in the majority deciding that decision wants it to be reconsidered, that person, whoever it may be, as long as you were in the majority, has the right to ask that it be put on the agenda for reconsideration. If you're in the minority, you don't have that right, but if you're in the majority, you do.
Absolutely. I totally agree. I understand. So if the majority wants it, so I, I voted for that too. It passed four to one.
If you wanted to reconsider, you could have asked like Mike did.
Any contract, any item whatsoever.
Now, that's assuming, that is assuming that in the, um, two weeks, um, in between council meetings, that once the contract's signed, the town is bound.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have, here's my advice, and I tell this to all the councils that I represent. If you decide on reflection, the night of the meeting, you're, you're getting ready for bed, brushing your teeth, whatever, and you say, gee, I really wish we hadn't voted that way, you should let the manager know the next day or as soon thereafter as possible so that you don't run into a situation where you actually want to reconsider, but it's too late because you have a legally binding contract.
Thank you very much.
All right. We're now going to move on to new business item E. Discussion and potential action relative to the creation of a youth advisory board as requested by council member Jay Wedgemont. Jay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselors and the public, um, eh, two months ago, we sent a, uh, a formal, uh, or a draft advisory for the youth advisory board and sent it to our legal counsel. Um, and our counsel came up with, uh, a, a firmer, uh, structure that would look, have the youth advisory board, uh, be structured to have five members, um, to be from ages sixteen to twenty-one, um, and to, um, act under the authority of advising the council pursuant to the town charter. Um, it's back to us, uh, to discuss it. And as I mentioned, when I did propose the youth advisory board, it's a straightforward and formal way for young people in South Kingstown to share their perspectives on the issues, uh, that affect them. And I have had so many young people in South Kingstown come up to me with excitement about this. And I believe that we see young people in the audience, out in public, really working for our, our town. And I think that a youth advisory board, uh, would be a great addition for our town and for us to be advised, uh, by the young people who are going to be our future. So that is what the proposal in front of you.
All right. Mike Garcillo, I know your office has vetted this. Um, I know that Councilman Wedgemont has made this request several months ago. Your office had an opportunity to spend some time on this. If you want to report to the council some of your findings, thoughts, recommendations?
So, um, we did some research to see what else was out there with regard to youth advisory boards, just so that we figured we wouldn't be the, you know, first council to, um, consider something like that. We didn't really find anyone else in Rhode Island. Um, we did find one that's, um, in New York. Um, there are, the, there are challenges to setting this up. I've had this conversation with, with Jay. Um, the challenges involve the fact that you have young adolescents who are involved, um, who are still minors. Um, therefore you have the whole issue of number one parental permission. I, probably not a big obstacle to overcome, but you are going to have to, um, think about that. Number two, um, because there are minors involved on this board, um, we've got to be careful with who the advisors are. And this would be true of any group that has minors involved, whether they're the, the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts or YMCA groups, et cetera. So there's a, a heightened standard that needs to be maintained when you're dealing with, um, young individual adolescents. So you just can't assign a staff person, um, to do this. You, you need someone with a little bit of background, some training, um, individual who has had, if not experience, certainly training in dealing with, um, um, adolescents, youth, et cetera. Um, because the types of topics that come up, et cetera, are, um, you, you have to be careful where you go with them, let's put it that way. I'm not going to get into a bunch of examples. Um, the other thing is that like any committee or board that you establish, um, you're going to have to comply with, um, OMA, the Open Meetings Act. So someone's going to have to be responsible for, you know, posting, taking note. Just like any subcommittee of the town that you set up, no, no different than any other subcommittee, but someone's going to have to take on that responsibility. So those are some of the, the issues to consider and to weigh, um, when you're deciding whether or not this is something that makes sense to get established.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Just two points to supplement what you just said. I've served as a volunteer with the Scouts for thirty years. Every twenty-four months I have to take, uh, youth protection training classes and I have to submit to a BCI check.
Right.
And we can't have adults who haven't been vetted.
Yeah.
Doing this.
Uh, good point. It's in my memo. Um, BCI would be an absolute necessity, um, for anyone who would be involved with, um, with this group. Um, and that's, that's common sense, right? Of course you'd want a BCI, um, to make sure that the adults that are advising are clear that way. And in terms of the training, that is something that I pointed out, that especially the staff liaison person would have to have that type of training. And that's going to take resources. And Jim and I have spoken about that and, you know, the council sets a direction. If you want to go in this direction, you're going to have to budget for this. It's, it's that simple.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
What do you mean budget for this?
Um, I'm, you know, and I'm sure Jim can respond to this. And again, I know Jim has had conversations with Jay also. There is presently no one on staff who'd be able to do this. So you're talking about either finding someone who'd be interested in doing it on staff and training that person or bringing in someone new.
I understand. Thank you.
All right. You know, certainly some obstacles to this. Certainly a, you know, good idea, getting youth involved in, you know, local politics, uh, trying to give them some sort of, uh, you know, way to influence policy, give us a way to sort of get closer to the youth community as to what's affecting them, you know, what's affecting, you know, their peers and, uh, really, you know, get some information, uh, through that sort of mechanism funnel up to the council. But, uh, you know, certainly some obstacles. Uh, we haven't, you know, or Mike Garcillo had just stated, there isn't one in Rhode Island that has done this, apparently one in New York. Um, what do we think here? I mean, uh, it's not an easy decision. Something obviously novel and new, um, you know, likely would take resources, you know, from the town, i.e. some sort of, uh, budget appropriation to, A, get someone on staff to get the training or bring in someone with the training and then have them be the, uh, point person, town, uh, liaison to the council. Um, what do we think?
So we hire lifeguards of the age of sixteen to eighteen in this town? Is that correct? Right?
Yes.
And so do our park staff, do they receive any sort of youth supervision or any sort of the training that, um, that Vice President Marin stated?
If, if I could just jump in there, lifeguards are employees. That is a whole different process than a voluntary group. And I, and I'll certainly let Jim answer in terms of whatever the, the rec department has, but, um, towns all throughout the state hire youth for various jobs, um, lifeguards. Um, they, they sit at the library, reception, receptionists, et cetera. But they're employees. Um, there's different insurance coverage for employees. Um, so it's, it is a, a different, it's not apples to apples.
So just to clarify, Mike, why I asked that question?
Yeah, sure.
Was because, um, if there was a training every twenty-four months that town, uh, staff already participated in, adding one more person into that, a liaison for the youth advisory board, that would, to me, would be able to save money in that regard. That's what I, that was where my question came from, not if it was the same thing or, or not. Um, as far as town resources goes, if there needs to be a staff liaison to serve as the youth advisory board, considering that it is the, my proposal, I would put myself forward to both pay for the training that would be necessary and to be the advisor for it. Additionally, I have been told that, uh, by several teachers in South Kingstown High School that they would be interested in serving as an advisor on the committee. So those are a few things I just wanted to clarify to my colleagues.
So I, I think that, um, having kids provide input is, uh, is a great idea. However, I, I believe strongly that it needs to be done through the schools, through the civic club, through the teachers that are interested in acting as liaisons. Um, where, where already, they're qualified to work with youth. I know I volunteered in the schools the entire time that my daughter was in school. I was always, um, a chaperone on all of the field trips. I was a Girl Scout leader. You have to really, um, it's, it's, the, the kids are, um, they're impressionable adolescents. And, um, I think it's really important that we have, um, people that are able to work with them reliably, that we have the right insurances in place. Um, sort of requiring that a civil servant who works at the town hall because they're interested in politics has to then, um, become qualified to do this other, uh, different thing seems like a lot, uh, a lot to expect. So to, to, um, in summation, I would like to possibly consider working with the kids through the school with a teacher liaison, um, rather than trying to develop a whole different program here at the town hall.
So I think there are other ways to achieve what you would like without creating a board. I think Patty's articulated working with the high school, but I also, um, think that we could take responsibility as a group of five and write to the principals and invite them, dedicate a youth day where they come to the council meeting. We have the scouts come, we have different, the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts come, different groups come, but have them be able to come. I think it takes, um, you know, practice to come to the microphone and speak and that's how you learn advocacy skills. That's how you learn how politics works from the other side, which is just as important as sitting on this side, is the work that the community does. So I think we could have a summit or designated day or twice a year where we invite people and they're, they're welcome to the microphone. We plan for the public comment. We plan the meeting appropriately so that they can engage and talk about things. They can prepare, they can practice. There's the debate club, there's whatever other proud has or other schools. And I think there's ways to have them always come. I also feel that five people may not fully represent the thousands, at least the thousand at the high school and other high schools in, in the college students. And I don't want to figure out who's, you know, politically picked, whatever. I don't want to have a battle about it. I want it to be egalitarian where anybody who wants to be in the club or anybody who wants to show up can speak and rather than to limit it to five. And then, you know, I also hear the concerns about, I don't like being the novel one, the only one in Rhode Island, the first one, don't like to go first sometimes. And then I also think the staff time is a legitimate thing. At every meeting, we are asking a different department head. We met with Rich tonight. He's got a ton of stuff to do for the water organs. We've got Jamie working on the mainstream grant, all these other issues. Luke is doing whatever Luke does. It's everything, everything. Sorry, I couldn't give you a list. Almost everything. And, and so I don't know where you get that from. Terry is working on Old Mountain Field, right? We could, that's a natural place. That's where the, everybody is so busy. And I think there's a way to do it that it's, it can be a council responsibility. And I think inviting them to participate, it, it puts it on us versus on the paid staff who have other responsibilities. So I'd be inclined not to make one at this time. But I also believe Jay in advocacy. So maybe in another term, if you feel like you want this to happen, by all means, you bring it up again.
Can, can I also say that, um, that I'm actually on the board of an organization called Time to Advocate? And we brought a bunch of high school and college students to Washington DC in, uh, June of this year, and that included some SK students. Um, and so I, it's possible even that we could develop a, a, a group here that could sort of, um, you know, we, we could sort of try to funnel the kids into something like that, maybe. Um, I, I just think that outside, uh, groups may be better practical purposes.
I think, uh, you know, I think it's certainly a good idea. I think the intentions are good. I think, uh, you know, finding a way for, uh, youth, you know, high schoolers to have more of a voice, feel more involved, uh, get engaged in local civics. I think that's important. And I think that, you know, that certainly would allow, uh, local government a better connection to the students. Um, I just, you know, it's, it's tough to do this in, in a sort of formal way by creating a committee, uh, that's advisory to the council. And we've already heard the number of obstacles outlined by our legal counsel. As, uh, you know, this is not an easy lift. Um, obviously a novel thing. We've already gone through that novel being new and had not really, has not really been done before. Um, but I think that, you know, there's, there has to be an alternative way, uh, maybe an informal way in which, you know, somehow some group is formed that meets regularly, uh, that, you know, could, is invited to council meetings to come up and, you know, speak to us, give us their insight, whatever it may be. Uh, I just think that, you know, trying to do this in a formal way, creating a, like official committee advisory to the council, I think that's just not something in our appetite at this time, but I think there's other ways to explore this idea that could be just as effective. And I don't know if we've, uh, sort of determined what that is at this time, but I'm certainly open to that. But as to the, you know, the formality that's been requested here, I'm not sure that we as the council have an appetite for that right now. Uh, but if we can figure out a different way, I'm certainly open to that.
Counselors, thank you for, so much for your thoughtful, um, advice and, uh, positions on this youth advisory board. You know, I addressed the Rhode Island or the URI Student Senate the other day, and my God, were they excited about it. And the, uh, South Kingstown High School Civics Club is very excited about it. So much in fact that they reached out to me, when is the youth advisory board proposal going to be heard at the town council? Um, look, I get it. I, I get that doing something new is hard and scary. And you're right, Councilwoman Bergner, I will bring this up in the future because I do believe in this. And I think that, uh, you know, I worked three years at Providence Public Schools, the largest school district in the, uh, state, twenty thousand students. And we caught a lot of flak in the administration quite often, some for good and some for bad. Uh, but one thing that we consistently heard all of the time was the necessity to, for, to hear student and young people's voices and to put it forward. So if this being novel is something that is holding you back, propose some changes that would make you feel better as opposed to voting the whole measure down. Um, I completely understand why it's hard for you to understand this. And as we heard from the, the four. And as we heard from the Affordable Housing Committee, we might not hear from you for a year anyway. So, look, I think that you should consider this. I hear that you're, some of you aren't, and that's the way the council business goes. And I think that you should pass this, but I understand if you don't.
So I don't think we're going to take any action on this?
Motion to approve item 10E.
All right, need a second for that to advance.
Do you want me to?
Before you do that, if you vote in favor, you lose your ability to bring that back.
No, he can bring it back.
Not if he votes in favor and is in the minority.
Yeah, so, yeah, we went over this a little bit earlier. And you'd have to wait for a new council because once this council makes a decision during this term, if you're in the minority, I mean, the decision's been made at that point. Unless you bring back something so totally different and totally new that it really has nothing to do with the prior. So it might make sense not to make a motion on this at this point. But if you want to, by all means.
If you take a motion and you vote in favor and you're in the minority, you lose your ability to bring this item back. Whereas if there's no vote taken, you have the ability to bring this back at a subsequent meeting within this term.
So I'm just, I, I made this motion because I heard from you all that it doesn't really sound like you want to have you at the advisory board at all at the moment, right? And so if we had a new proposal come in that made necessary changes in order to appease some of your concerns, what would those be?
Yeah, go ahead.
I suggest that we don't vote on it. Hear me out. Plan, plan, instead of creating the board and then getting engagement, create engaging opportunities that bring the tidal wave that it has to happen, right? Do you see what I'm saying? So like have a youth day when we invite all youth to come give us feedback, right? And have that be your anchoring event. And rather than, that's how you advocate, right? Because you get a groundswell of people coming here and saying, we want to do this. Rather than, so build on the success of saying, instead of saying, I've met with a subset of people who want this. I wouldn't take a vote. I would do something else that engage, if you want to engage youth and I think it's a wonderful idea, do that.
I think it's really ill-advised to mix 16-year-olds and 21-year-olds from the Student Senate. I think that is just really bad idea to miss, mix those age groups.
16 and 19.
You said 16 to 21.
You said 16 to 21.
The original proposal was 16 to 21.
But once you get college kids and high school kids together, you're putting those younger kids at risk.
So if.
They're not, they're, they're not underage adults, they're adolescents. You can't treat them like they're, you can't, I, as a parent, when you think about your 16-year-old going to meetings with like 21-year-old kids from URI, it's not, it's dangerous.
Yeah, I mean, I was a union firefighter at 16 and a lifeguard East Platoon State Beach and I'm.
You're a boy. It's different. You can't stick.
You know what? I'm going to take the advice of my fellow counselors and re, and take this away for now so we can revisit the issue in the future.
Good. If I can make a suggestion, we did discuss this earlier, and one of the things when it came back up that I was expecting to see was a narrative, a structure, something in writing that indicates a mission statement or goals or how it was going to work. And we don't have that yet.
Wasn't it in it?
The only thing, the only thing with the agenda was the email.
But his original, Jay's original. Jay's original proposal had a lot of those things in it.
But I thought, but I thought when it came back to us, because we had a similar discussion about what about this, what about this, what about this, that there was going to be something, a narrative.
I hear you. I think that's fair feedback. And I think it's redundant now, but if the framework that I was sent by Counselor Orsillo could be shared in the future to be looked at, that would be helpful for.
Yeah, I, I came up with a set of proposed bylaws and we could certainly get that to everyone.
All right, thank you, Mike. So the motion's been revoked. There's going to be no vote taken on this item?
No motion, right, no motion.
Okay.
You can just move on.
All right, we're now going to move on, do the town manager's report. Jim Manny, what do we got?
So there's several items on this, a couple were added, so there's really five now instead of three. But the first one is the update in the homestead exemption program timeline. So back in October 21st, we had a work session talking about the homestead exemption program and the possibility of it. It was a very detailed briefing, it was very lengthy. And the direction by the council at the time was come back to us in about a month and let's, let's really hone down what we're going to be looking for. So you've all had about a month to look at this again and decide what exactly you would, direction you would want us to go. So what I'm asking tonight for is direction from the town council on a date for the next work session, if you'd like a work session, which I would think you would, on this item. And also to narrow down the options. Each option that we study is very labor intensive. We have to do all different kinds of scenarios on it, fiscal impacts, tax rates and so forth. It takes, just to do a couple, it takes about a month. But I think listening to the council a month ago, there were several areas that you were very interested in. You were possibly interested in a 5% homestead exemption, which was one. There was expanding the personal exemptions, which was two, expanding them much higher than they are now. And the third one was that you would possibly cap the total benefit you could get at about the median price home, which is approximately 582,000, I think it is, so round up to 600,000. The question to the solicitor was at the time, could we do that? And I spoke to our solicitor today and he said, yes, we could. You could cap it, that's the highest amount.
You could, you could, you could put a cap on it, either the median price or whatever. Yes.
So, but let's go over some of the statistics. So last Friday, I sent the town council a, an email with a statistic that even I was a little surprised with. So there are about 9,200 single-family homes in this town, half, 50, it was identical, 50% were under or were below the median value of our homes in this town and half were above. And I would have expected that number to be lower for the median income. I expected maybe 30, 40%, but Wendy did some research on that and it came out to about 50% and even 50%. And she double-checked it several times. So that would be another option to study. But also, let's go over some of the basic facts. Because our town is at least 75% owner occupied of the 9,200 single-family homes that we have in this town, there are about 14,000 taxable properties, but 9,200 are the ones that we really are concentrating on as far as, they're the ones that are eligible for a homestead exemption, up to 10%. But because the pool is not limited there, we have 9,200 homes, at least 75%, maybe as high as 80, 77% or even 81%. We don't know that exact number because we do not have a registration, we do, well, we haven't got any data yet. But where we're getting that best educated estimate is about 77% to 81% of the tax bills are sent to the address of the property, which indicates it's probably, a very high probability, those are owner occupied homes. So let's lower that a little, let's go to 75%. So now you have 25%. So if you give 75% of the owner occupied homes some type of tax break, we still need that money to run the town for the schools, pavement, you name it, we need that chunk of money. We run lean, there's no, unless we cut programming, there's nothing really to cut. 95% of our budget is fixed. We have maybe 5% discretionary, and it's really not discretionary. It's stuff, programs that we would have to cut. So with that being said, who is going to bear the brunt of the savings that 75% of the 9,200 homes is going to get in a tax break? That amount of money would have to be pushed off to that remaining 25%. And so the first question we, I would ask is, and I think I know the answer, the commercial tax properties, the commercial properties. You know, you would need to give me direction. Do you want those affected? Now, either way, they're going to be affected because they're not single-family homes. They will not be part of a homestead exemption. So if the tax rate is, if the tax implication burden is shifting to 25%, they're part of that 25%. It's a complicated thing, it's not easy. That's why a lot of cities and towns don't have this. But I know you, it's one of your top priorities and you're working hard towards it. So we have to figure out the right way, the right balance to give the property owners, the people that either need it the most or set value on their home. So these are the things. So once again, I need, if you would like a work session, we probably should schedule it soon. And also, what areas would you like me to hone in on? And I have some of the statistics from the last slides that we did, the 5% exemption, the personal exemptions. I gave you the statistic on the median family homes, 50/50. So I'm looking for direction from the council, which, which areas do you want the staff to concentrate on moving forward for the next work session?
Great. Go ahead, go.
Can you also go to the slide that says what the costs of running this program would be? Because a resident reached out and said, we're going to spend $90,000 to lower our tax bills by $60. Some crazy soundbite I got sent to me, which.
So there is a cost to, to running a homestead exemption program. You would definitely need a clerk to oversee, you know, 7,200 properties in a program. So.
It's on one of the slides.
Yeah, there is a slide with the.
This isn't hyperlinked, otherwise, because it's not hyperlinked to the agenda, I can't find it fast.
It, it should be, correct?
Typo link.
Yeah. So we estimated, looking at that question, it was, we had to hire a clerk with benefits, you know, standard pay. And, and this would be the approximate cost of running that program. It was about 90,000 for the, for the original clerk. We'd have to get software programs, which is in that's 25,000 to 50,000. And obviously some office equipment to, you know, which is a minimal amount, 10,000, but still.
Even still, you have to spend 100 and something.
And how much do we anticipate generating in revenue from the rental registration that we passed recently?
We don't know. We don't, we, it's a big unknown.
But we do at least have some certainty as to a minimum number of short-term rentals which are subject to an annual fee of $300. Is that correct?
Yes, but we can't keep.
Air DNA has given us the ability to identify at least a minimum number of short-term rentals that are likely subject to a fee of $300 annually. Is that right?
Yes, there is a, there is a number that we're looking at, yes. I don't have that number in front of me, but it, it would bring in, but once again, that generates, you know, there's enforcement for that as well, so.
Yes.
There's a cost to that. You can't keep collecting the money and spending it for all different things. It's going to generate some money.
You know what, Jamie Gomer, come on up.
Yeah, Jamie would have the numbers that, the last he checked, he could give you the most up-to-date numbers.
So we're in the process of implementing and rolling out rental registration, but what we do have for numbers for short-term rentals from 2023 data is 472. So at $300 per unit, that equates to about $141,000. So I mean, that'd be revenue generated.
And that's likely a minimum amount generated on the annual basis from short-term rentals?
Correct. So that's excluding, that's excluding the year-round rental registration units, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, I have an idea of what I would like to see in a work session, I'll just sort of let, throw that out there. I think we all have an appetite to increase the amount of the personal exemptions. I mean, I think that's something we could likely issue an order of notice, have a public hearing if that requires a public hearing, and, and just sort of get that done. As to homestead exemption, to me, 10% homestead exemption was sort of out of reach, not really practical. I think that's out. I like 5% homestead, but I'd like to see what the numbers are in a 5% homestead with a cap. I'd like to see different options, a cap of 600, maybe a cap of 700, even a cap of 800, just so we could see what all this looks like. I know one question that was sort of outstanding was whether, do we have the ability to exclude properties that are valued over a certain amount? Not, which is different than capping, you'd still get the relief up to a certain cap, but can you exclude properties from being subject to the homestead exemption?
We cannot exclude. We can just, no, we can't because it's got to be, you got to come up with a basis that's fairly applied across the board to a class of individuals, fairly equitable, there you go.
Now, if you go to one of the last few slides, might have been, you know, the third to last, we look at like a fixed. Now, go back a few. This one here.
Flat rate.
I'd like to also just see what this looks like if we capped the assessed value that's eligible to 600. So that's really all, what I would like to see, 5% homestead capped at, a few scenarios, 600K, 700K, 800K. I'd like to see what this looks like capped at 600, maybe the same, sort of different scenarios, capped at 600, capped at 700, 800, just to see what that looks like. I don't have interest in exploring tiered rates. I'd rather not increase the commercial rate for the purpose of lowering the residential rate. I don't think that's, you know, good policy. I don't think that's good for influencing business activity. I think that would only, you know, be a negative for our town. So those are the three things I would like. I think we're already good on the personal exemptions. Maybe we would just look at what potential increased amounts would be, and then those other two homesteads type of preferences I had elaborate on. Go ahead.
I had two takeaways from the workshop. One was with respect to the multi-tier system. I think that would be a mistake in terms of policy. We have very limited, and one of the witnesses mentioned specifically, we have very limited commercial property per zoning in the entire town. And I think this would wind up being an impediment to that. I'd rather not go down that road. And the second thing that I came away with was that the, expanding the existing exemptions would be a simpler way to go, number one. Number two, it would reach, I think, depending on how we set it up, it would reach the people who need it the most. The context for us starting down this road with a homestead exemption in '23 was because at the time, we were talking about what the cost of the debt service for the new high school was going to be. And back then, we didn't know whether the voters were going to approve it or not, but they did. And the concern was that there would be people, particularly long-term residents, who might not be able to afford the increase in the taxes that come from that additional debt service. Those, I think, are the people that we need to prioritize, not by length of residence in town, but simply using the exemption program, the need in order to meet the obligations of the tax burden that's going to be on the entire town. If we focus in on that, and I think it would be relatively easier to administer, we do it now with tax forms for the exemption that does exist, is take a look at someone's adjusted gross income. They have to sign a paper when they come in saying, here's a true copy of my tax form. And I think that's how Providence did it when they had a homestead exemption.
So I think Mike did a good job of the recollections. I definitely think that, we talked about the exemptions for the elderly. We wanted as a schedule of fees so that we didn't have, so we could amend the fees more nimbly than an ordinance, right? That's what we talked about. We, and we talked about this, we really, I think. We, and we talked about this, we really, I think my recollection of the goals is that we weren't going to enact a homestead exemption, but we were going to investigate one, to see if it was plausible and feasible. We're not necessarily committed to creating a homestead exemption if it's not viable. And I think, I want to underscore this point. My takeaway from the work session was, we're trying to do this at the same time that we're trying to finance and put the high school financing together. And I just feel like it would be better to go slower in this and do the exemptions, expansions, and see what that's like before we then do this. Because I don't, whoever wrote to me, I'm going to have to go back and look at it, literally said, "You're spending $90,000 or $100,000 to save me $100." Is that, does that even make, like, is it worth all the effort for people to save $100? Like, I don't know. I think there's better ways to, to save them that money. And it comes through responsible spending. And I think that's where I think it's, the more that we can make the tax rate remain as efficient as possible, recognizing the high school's going to cost something, it's going to increase the, the rate over time, to do it slowly. I, I don't really know, Rory, I appreciate your accounting brain to go exclude the 600, 7,000, because I can't remember. I think that was a nuance of the work session. So I don't know, it's only you that understands maybe what you said. They laughed, so I know it wasn't.
I kind of, I followed it.
Somewhat.
Somewhat.
I don't know. I, I don't know what you asked the staff to really crunch out there again, because you said it in accounting speech.
So first off, I walked away from the, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So I'm in agreement with what we wanted to look at, what President McGinty said, the options that we want to expand on. I'm okay with having a work session in December or January, sooner the better, in my opinion. I understand the arguments for strengthening the exemptions. Totally reasonable, very good arguments. My only problem is, is that strengthening the exemptions takes the focus away on young homeowners who are looking to buy in South Kingston, put their kids in our school districts, and continue to have, to keep our town lively. And, you know, this town by census is getting grayer and older and richer, right? We need young families to try to move into our, our town, feed our, our school district feeder, and grow the town. And exemptions don't do that, unfortunately, right? Unless we have a young homeowner exemption, which would be a great idea, but, I mean, I think, I think about so many people who are lucky enough to be my peer and own a home, and how much everything is, and how expensive it is, how much easier it used to be to be a young homeowner in South Kingston. That's my only problem with strengthening the exemptions, right? It misses a class of citizens in South Kingston that I think we need to really look at, which is working-class families and young people. A work session in December, yeah?
I think probably January. I think December's a little tough. We could squeeze it in early January if possible.
I would say December's nearly impossible, but at this point, we have a lot of budget stuff going on. But January's possible.
Okay.
Try the month out or six weeks out, or?
Yeah, let's shoot, let's shoot for that. Well, a month from now is December, so sometime in January.
A week from now is December.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so why don't, why don't you pick a date in January and let's, let's go from there?
When do our budget meetings start in January? Have we selected those dates yet?
Yeah, we have, there's a list went out today.
I saw the list of the council meetings.
Yeah, we had, the first one's December 18th.
The budget session, I was waiting for staff to make sure there wasn't any conflicts with us before having the council review the budget schedule. That wasn't sent to them? No.
You have a copy in front of you, though, right? Do you have a copy in front of you?
No.
No, because it wasn't sent to them. Only the regular schedule was sent this morning.
I have a regular schedule.
Yeah, the regular schedule is all set.
I'll bring, I'll bring up the proposed at the moment.
December 18th, we have a joint budget.
That's the initial budget hearing.
Did we set that, did we agree to that date? Was I not at a meeting? I mean, I don't recall that. It's a Thursday.
That's the, that's the week and the date, pretty much, we've had every year.
But it's not, the council sets the date, that the council sets the date. So I just didn't recall that we set that date. Does that work for people?
That works for me, and I caution.
Thursday, December 18th.
We should not do Christmas week.
So what time is that meeting?
7:00.
And it's with the school committee or just with you?
With the school committee.
Could we have Jess send out a calendar invite for that?
Yeah, she will, as soon as we finalize, like, we, I guess the dates didn't go out yet because of...
I was waiting for staff to be available and cool with that before having counseling prove as well, just so we could make sure everybody's all good, all at once.
You could also choose the state at your December 8th meeting. You could choose the January workshop date at your December 8th regular council meeting. Because by then, you'll have all those other dates in the calendar and, yeah.
Let's do that. There's an issue with my microphone. Oh, I think it's back. Let's do that. That way, we'll have certainty as to what the dates of those budget work sessions will be in January, and we can plan around that and identify a date for the homestead exemption work session.
Okay, proposed, I have January 5th and 6th for the work sessions.
Oh, that's it?
January 5th and 6th?
For the work sessions, yes.
What days of the week are those?
Monday and Tuesday. But sorry, budget work sessions.
Those are the only work sessions preliminary scheduled for the month of January?
So on a Monday, we wouldn't be televised because that's Naragansett's night, so could we not do a Monday?
I just want to make sure, am I correct that the only work sessions that are preliminary scheduled for January right now are the 5th and 6th?
Yes, and then January 26th at a regular session, we're looking at adoption of the CIP, but that's obviously separate and under a regular meeting.
All right, how about Wednesday, the 14th, or Wednesday, the 21st?
For what?
Work session date for a homestead exemption, yes.
I thought we were punting this until the next meeting.
I need to know when Martin Luther King weekend is?
All right, let's decide this.
I just don't know the numbers.
I don't see why the 5th and 6th would not stand for work sessions.
So that, I just said, if we want it to be televised, we're competing with Naragansett.
But they, they do tape it and you can, you can see it after.
But people watch it live all the time, and you know that, so.
Are we feel comfortable choosing a date tonight, or do we want to choose a date at the first meeting in December?
I would choose, yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Nally.
All right, we're going to bring this up again, first meeting December, and identify a date for this work session. But Jim, I think you got what you need for, you know, the content and the makeup of the presentation.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
So we didn't pick a session?
All right, continue on.
Next item is the, just an update on the Revolutionary War Memorial. Currently, the 250th Anniversary Committee is working, is assigned to that project. There's some challenges with that, the timeline, when it could get done, the design, the financing. Sharon Henderson had come up with that original concept many months ago, and it's currently falls under the 250th Anniversary Committee. The question's going to be, is that project too big, too labor-intensive, too much going on to assign it or to another committee, or should it be standalone committee? That will be the question that'll be posed to you in January at the first town council meeting. So we're just giving you an update now on what the challenges will be. I spoke to Representative Tanzi. There is a $16,000 grant available that we still, from my understanding, have not applied for yet. We're kicking that down the road a little. We got an extension on it. But you will have, that'll be a decision that the council will have to make in beginning of January, whether to keep it in the 250th Committee or form a separate committee to do this Revolutionary War Memorial. The third item is the update on the Green Hill Beach Dune Restoration is requested by Vice President Marin. Rich Bourbonay's here, Mike Stacks here. I'll get right to the summary. The sign is legal, it's authorized by CRMC, and there were no issues, but it keeps coming up a lot, so Mike, you can go over that.
Yeah, good evening. I know there was, believe there was some communication that went around, so I'm happy to outline that communication for you. I have some photos, I have the location. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for at this moment.
Mostly, I just wanted to put it out in the public and with the council. We had gotten an email, essentially a complaint about a sign at the Green Hill Beach Dunes. And I just wanted some public clarification, because it appeared, one of the communications was an email from Emily Hall at CRMC, saying that they looked into it and that it was legitimate. But I, I wanted to hear from the experts.
Sure, I, I don't claim to be an expert, but I'm happy to discuss it further.
Here you are.
So the, the address in question has a CRMC ascent for Dune Restoration work. The address is 7 Green Hill Avenue. This is all public information. Anybody from the public can go to CRMC, is my understanding, and review these ascents and the applications. And the conditions of the ascent dates back to 2021. I guess there's been successful vegetation restoration, but beyond that, closer to the ocean, they tried sand, which wasn't holding up, so they subsequently approved some cobble restoration. This sign is permitted under the ascent. You can pass below the fence between the, the high tide and the fence on most tidal situations. The recent storms have kind of cut out that area. It's a little bit of a slope, a little drop-off, and kind of rocky area. And I will note, it's at the end of a town right-of-way. Green Hill, Green Hill Avenue is one of the town right-of-ways to the shore.
I think the basic nature of the complaint was about the sign itself, not the project, because it, to, to one person at least, it appeared to restrict access to the beach itself. So I think we just needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next item, a message came out about a week ago. I learned about it today. So the Community Learning Center, that $3.6 million project that we're working on, is going to be a great asset to the town once it's done. But we knew there would be some disruptive services that we would experience. We narrowed it down, there would probably be a two- to three-month period, because they're taking down the loft area in that Community Learning Center. It's a lot of demolition work. It's a renovation, a major renovation. So it's estimated to be two to three months that the library, Peacedale Library will shut down. It'll start on January 5th. That's the date we have right now to be shut down. There will be disruption in some services, but we're trying to make it as pain-free as we can. So Laurel Clark has come up with an idea that we would expand the hours of the two remaining libraries that will be open. And we will publish those times and dates. We're still about six, seven weeks away from doing this, so we have time. So the hours will be expanded by about one-third more hours earlier and later. The staff at the library will be filling in on those additional hours. And we're researching the best place to put some computer terminals for people that would need them. There are nine terminals there now. I don't think we can put nine terminals in one location, but we could, we're looking at anywhere from two to four. Maybe at the Guild. We looked at the Senior Center, but I'm not sure that's the best place. So the Guild is the priority that we're looking at. Lord Fox has been looking into that, and we'll have an answer on, on that soon. So January 5th, Peacedale Library will, it's scheduled right now to be closed for two to three months. The...
I have a question, Jim.
Yes.
Are, are our staff going to be working overtime?
Yeah, so just some clarity on how this needs to work with the OMA. If Jim gives you an announcement, that's fine. It's just part of his manager's report. If there's going to be discussion, though, back and forth with Jim, we need to just add it to the agenda. So just someone make a motion to add the Community Learning Center.
To the agenda.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So is our staff going to be considering working overtime?
No, will not be overtime. So the displaced staff from the Peacedale Library will be reassigned to the other libraries, alternating their hours to cover those additional hours and shifts.
Gotcha. And maybe you could consider the Recreation Center, too, for some terminals as well.
Rec Center, I think, I think the Guild is probably the most logical place, because it really, it, what's that?
It's classroom space.
Yes. And we do have terminals there already, so it probably would be much easier to, but wherever Laurie can research, the best place to put them, within walking distance of a public library, I think would be the best. But we, we're working on that. We still have time.
So I, I was, I had, I don't know, we'd probably talk for over an hour about this this morning.
Forty-six minutes.
Was it?
Yes.
Twice.
Not that I was counting. No, three times. Nine minutes, one call, five minutes, another forty-six.
Yeah, we had a lot of time on the library. I just, I don't think, Jim, I, I had to advocate for people that use the library that may not have a car. So it's, it's great that Hale is open and Kingston is open, but if you use the library on foot, or you walk there after school, you don't have that for tutoring or whatever you do, that is, that's lost. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, it's one thing you can get the computer terminal at the Guild, but if you need a book, how are you getting the book? So you're, we need to be very proactive, because many people, many, many people use the library. Otherwise, we wouldn't be getting a $3 million grant to expand the library and expand the scope of services. So it's really important, that is the accessible, underserved populations around there can, can use that library very easily. So I had, sorry, Jim, three conversations. I thought it was only two.
Who's counting?
You.
Was it?
But I think it's important. I also think we need to have people, the announcer came through social media, right? And, you know, right now, nobody cares, because nobody's driven there and been turned away. But I just wanted to tell Jim that no one's going to be upset until they decide that they don't get their books or whatever their need to do. So we just need to be very mindful that that resource will be unavailable. I know it'll be an amazing resource on the other side.
All kidding aside, Deb and I did have a spirited discussion this morning, but I will say this.
You told me I would be a great lawyer.
You would. But the, the point is, take a look what's going on in this town. Look, look at the stuff that is, we're doing. We had, what, four groundbreakings, EMS, O'Mont Field, Community Learning Center, high school, like, so I don't know any town with four major projects like that. What we have to keep in mind is, there is going to be disruption in some of our services, and it's going to, for example, the roads. Look at Curzy Road, like, what a mess that was all weekend, right? I mean, I had a Jeep and I barely made it through. But it's because we're doing things. It's because we're moving forward. If we take the path of least resistance, which we never would do, no one would be complaining because it'd be just status quo. We're getting great things done in a good amount of time, at very low impact to the town on tax dollars. So I think the messaging should be, just bear with us, be patient, we're doing the best we can, we're trying to improve the best things we can in this town. And by next year at this time, we're going to have great strides, and most of this stuff will be done by then. That's, that's the message. But I understand the frustration. Believe me, I went through Curzy Road and up there, and I'm like in disbelief. I almost had to put my Jeep in four-wheel drive. So, now I talked to Rich Bourbonay about it.
Is it over?
And, no, not yet. I think we put the binder down today. We also had another major disruption, and I sent you a text on it. Who would think that in a motor vehicle accident could take down a transformer and take the underground wires from the ground? Major Bukos here, called me right on time, the police department stepped up, they, right away, sign, signboards, blinking lights, pushing DOT to get it done in a timely manner. So I sense everyone's frustration, but we're doing the best we can, and I promise you we'll deliver a good product.
The, the idea that you mentioned about using room or rooms at the Guild for the computer, that might be a decent spot to try and do some sort of a circulating desk, because then they're just across the street from the library, get the books, and they come from all over the state, because I've used them for that.
Yeah, I, but I, I talked to Laurel today, and she, she volunteered to come here. She was working an extra shift tonight to supplant. She does it all the time. Even though she's director, she still works extra shifts at no cost to the town. The library's going to be closed. It's going to be a major renovation. It's going to be a major renovation. So, they're going to block off whole sections. It would be unsafe to bring people in there. So...
One last name is, I want a book.
Yep.
And I think I have a book because I have...
Yeah, I'm not so sure on that yet. Let me, I can ask that, but that's why we're expanding the other libraries. We could almost get it from a different library.
That was all I was suggesting, was that the circulating system, I forget, it's like R-I-C-L-I-S or something. You can, if you don't have a book at Peacedale, and while it's being renovated, we don't have a book at Peacedale, but you can get it from Cranston or Johnston or Block Island and have it shipped. That's what they do every day.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We'll do the best we can to, Laurel, this is a work in progress now. Now, we know the date. Now, we can start moving backwards as to what services can we insulate people from being disrupted on. So, hopefully, it's only two months, three months.
Thanks for the effort.
Thank you, Jim.
That is the last item.
All right. Thank you, Jim. It's now going to move us to item 12, Public Hearing. Deputy Chief Buco, come on up. This is a public hearing relative to standing orders 210.05, harassment in the workplace, 2207, promotional slash transfer procedure, 420.01, vehicular pursuit, 440.03, cell block slash holding facility, and 460.01, uniform standards as further described in a memorandum dated October 20, 2025, from the police chief to the town manager, entitled Submission of Updated Standing Orders for Town Council Approval. Welcome. What do we got?
Good evening. So, as you're aware, as you mentioned, council president, we have five standing orders that we're seeking a resolution to make minor amendments to these orders. This is in line with accreditation standards. So, it is necessary for us to update our policies accordingly to maintain accreditation standards for the best practices for, you know, policing standards and also service to the town and the residents of South Kingstown. As you are aware, the standing orders require Town Council approval for us to actually make these changes effective. So, we're here before you for these five standing orders to be changed effectively, as you mentioned.
All right. Any questions from members as to the details of these standing orders? All right, this is a public hearing. So, we'll open it up, see if anyone has anything to say specific to this public hearing. We just ask that you introduce yourself. We're going to leave you to five minutes. When we begin speaking, this timer over here will begin counting down. It's a way to gauge yourself to stay within the five. But with that said, first come, first served. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item, come on up. All right, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So, moved.
We got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 12A?
Motion to approve item 12A.
Thank you.
We got a motion, we got a second. Any discussion?
Yes, yes. Could you just?
Deputy Chief Buco, come on back up.
You just scooted away before. I was like, the vehicular pursuit? Could you just explain what the tracking through the power DMS, is that something new?
No. So, the power DMS system is a software system that we use to maintain all of our policies. And we also use that to track the training and implementation of our policies. So, when we make amendments to policies, the changes are reflected in the power DMS system, and then we in turn send those out to the patrol officers or the sworn and civilian personnel to review the policies, and then they sign off on the said policies in that system to ensure compliance.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was like a DMV checker of the pursuing of the person. So, it's just a tracking portfolio, like each officer does each of the items?
It is. It's a software system. That's just the name of it, Power DMS. It's an online platform that, it's easy for us. It's a library of all our policies, and it's easier for us to maintain them and keep track of the changes and amendments and so forth, and the training requirements.
And then the harassment in the workplace, standing order change?
Yes.
Is that a change in the training, enhanced training, a different training, or who's your trainer?
No, it's actually just reflecting our practices. So, our policy is devoid that we train annually on harassment in the workplace. So, that isn't accreditation standard that our policy has to reflect, that we do conduct that training. We have been conducting that training for many, many years. It's just the proper repository to track that training.
And is that done by an officer in the house, in the department?
It is, yes. So, we have a training curriculum. We have a training division. The training division is responsible for administering the training from their office.
Okay. And then the uniform, summer is May 1. Is that like, did you not have a date before? I don't really know what the change was there.
No. So, previously, we didn't have a date, and it was the captain operations that would announce the change, the uniform cutover, meaning you can wear short sleeves or long sleeves and vice versa. We just felt it'd be more efficient for us to put a date in there, so there's no confusion for the officers and staff.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Hi, thanks for coming tonight. So, standing order number four, the cell block and holding facility. So, it says it revises the training requirements to include all affected personnel, sworn and non-s sworn, who may access the cell block area. Is this just updating who can access the cell block area, meaning non-personnel need proper, you know, training requirements in order to do that?
Exactly right. So, not only just sworn personnel, but non-s sworn personnel do access the cell block for a variety of reasons. So, again, it's just making our policies more contemporary and up to date with our practices to make sure we're in compliance with the accreditation standards. Our policy was devoid of certain language, so we inserted it just to make sure that we are in compliance. Doesn't mean we weren't conducting the training. Just make sure that our policies are reflective of our current practices.
I appreciate you walking me through that.
You're welcome.
Let me ask you a few questions here. So, you state that these standing orders are, these revisions here, for the purpose of complying with what's required to be accredited. We are currently accredited.
Yes.
So, certain omissions that are required to be accredited are not substantial enough to de-credit the police administration. Is that correct?
In so many words, yes. So, we are accredited, as you know. We were able to issue these amendments and these changes through special orders originally to comply and satisfy accreditation standards with the anticipation that we would update our policies to reflect the current practices. The RIPA, the Rhode Island Police Chiefs Accreditation Association, is well aware of the standing order provision that we have here in town, and that we can't just automatically change our policies as we see fit, that we need to go in front of the council and has to go out to public hearing. So, it's really a timing mechanism. So, we already made these changes through chief's special orders, but now we want to galvanize them in our policies.
Gotcha. So, when you submit, I guess, whatever's required to become accredited, they'll identify certain deficiencies, and then you, or the chief can make, you know, certain special orders, and then, you know, following that, because these standing orders require council approval per our charter, they subsequently come to us for, essentially, to, you know, enact or affirm, or whatever the, you know, technical word is there, to sort of put this into effect.
Exactly right.
Okay. And do you anticipate any other standing orders will come to us in the future?
I'm sure they will. I can't, we don't have any in the pipeline as of now, but again, you know, policies and standards are always changing, and we're adapting and evolving, and, you know, we're governed by the best standards and practices, which are dictated by accreditation process. So, I can't sit here and tell you that we will not change our policies in the future. They are living documents, and we have to be flexible and make sure that we maintain our standards.
So, the standards for accreditation are sort of always moving, sort of moving target, and when you, the department, becomes aware of changes that are necessary because standards have changed, and we are potentially vulnerable because we have a deficiency in that regard, special order will be made by the chief, and then standing order come to the council for them to affirm?
Exactly right.
All right. All right, makes sense.
We had a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? When are we getting that basketball court in there?
Soon, hopefully.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to bring us back to public comment. Anyone in the audience who has not a chance to speak yet, invite you to come on up. We just ask that you introduce yourself. We're going to leave you to five minutes.
Jim O'Neil, Wakefield. I'm sorry to have missed the Homestead work session, the comparison with other municipalities a few weeks ago. I'd mentioned there were 11 that had Homestead exemptions and six who had tiered residential rates. What I found missing, which I guess I'm the only one that's really brought it up over the last couple of years, is we should have had a list of all the municipalities who had age 65 and over tax exemptions. And you'll find that's a larger number, even more than 50% of the state municipalities who do have elderly exemptions. Couple of numbers, I think, need to be worked on. 1,831 single-family, non-owner occupied. Of the $4.9 billion, what does that 13% represent in assessed values? If you know they're 1,831, we can get that number. Computers can do that. And that's very important, because if they're non-owner occupied, of 1,831, I think you heard tonight, some rental registrations and a 470 number. You mean to tell me we could have 1,300 unoccupied homes? I mean, just think about that differential for the moment. They have to be rented. If they're not, I'm in the business, I can maybe find you 20 homes that are just non, everything's occupied some way or the other. That's a huge differential. So, are we missing that with the rental registry? Are we missing more income from that area? It's a very important area. And along with that, we need to find out, of the 3.9 billion of other assessments, what is the seasonal number? How many million-dollar homes do we have, well, you know, over a million dollars, from seasonal folks? That is another source of funding which nobody's talking about. No one's talking about that. This could be serious money. The easy way to help everybody here in the political world, I don't know why you're not pushing the senior 65 tax exemption. Now, maybe Mike will tell you that we need more, another enabling legislation, the same thing, can we do a tiered Homestead Act? Maybe we have to get enabling legislation on that, too. I don't, he's shaking his head, so maybe not on either. But I'll let him answer that after that. Let me just finish my rhythm here. I think the elderly exemption can save us in fiscal year '27, because, listen, I think you all know that I probably came to 100 meetings between when we're going to have an 85 million high school, a $125 million high school, 150 million elderly, elderly, elderly was mentioned all the time. Those who are not elderly, they have gotten something. They're getting a new high school. We're getting affordable housing in a number of areas that the town has. Those younger folks are getting something, but they got this high school. Now, how do you help out those elderly that have made this community so adoptable by all these other folks? So, I think that's easy for you. Couple other things. The principal and interest on the bond, I think you can guarantee now with a yield curve close to where things are now, I think you can guarantee $6.5 million annually for principal and interest. So, what I'm looking for is a million to $2 million for the elderly. Do you know how many elderly we have? We probably have over 65. We had about 7,500 before the last election, and 24 were probably 7,700, 7,800 now. Almost 25% of our town. And you're not going to think about them, and they're just coughing up the $150 million. And remember, with that last vote, with that last vote, 4,200 voted yes. 3,500 said no. 40% of the vote. 4,200 said yes. 7,700 are over 65, and you're not putting this out there for them? I hope you're not going to run on that, on your election efforts next year, because you just opened up an avenue here, which really you don't want to go down. And the other thing, I don't know what's going to happen with the University of Rhode Island. Gilbane supposedly is going to break ground very shortly on 1,100 new units. That may change a lot of things with a lot of college towns. But I bring up the tier because I've seen what Providence has gone through, Narragansett, now South Kingstown a little bit, North Smithville, where Bryant is. But you take university communities that probably really have to consider that. And waterfront. So, that's money in the bank to us if we know how to work these numbers. I've given you some numbers here. If you can find out those dollar amounts, you may pay for a whole couple million dollars, $500 each to every senior household here in this town. So, I want to see those numbers. I think very, very important. And lastly here, did I have anything else here? No, you know, all those meetings, it's always been the elderly that have come up. And by the way, Mr. President, this will not touch the commercial or industrial. We don't have to, because all these other residential homes are in our districts. Our residential, all this stuff. You don't have to mess up the commercial numbers right now. There's a way to work this out. I really hope you get all those numbers for us for your January meeting. But I really think the seniors will appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, my name is Tina Munter. I just wanted to provide a brief public comment about, I think it was Agenda Item D, the green municipal aggregation contract that the town of South Kingstown has. For context, I'm the policy advocate at Green Energy Consumers Alliance. So, we work with the municipal aggregation program to provide the renewable energy credits needed to fulfill the renewable energy obligation of the program. And so, I had noted that there was a question from some of the counselors about tracking the renewable energy content that's required in the program and also where it comes from. And so, we source over 95% of the renewable energy used to fulfill the contract from Rhode Island-based projects, but specifically that's wind from Coventry and Providence, and also solar from Johnston, North Providence, East Providence, and actually a project in South Kingstown. It's in the Kenyon Woods Solar Development, and that's a 4.4 megawatt solar facility that was, or that is located on a former septic waste disposal site. So, that's some context as to where the renewable energy is sourced from and how we track it to specifically benefiting Rhode Islanders, Rhode Island businesses, and keeping energy spending within the state and the region.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that information.
Yeah. And I am happy to provide you with some resources as well. I can follow up in an email, because we kind of host this on our website for transparency and clarity.
That would be amazing. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Please do.
Hello, my name is Hal Walker. I'm a resident of Wakefield. I came tonight because of the resolution to reconsider the extension on the Community Choice Aggregation Program in case there was a need for people supporting it. And I learned a lot. So, I found it very, very, very useful to listen to the questions and answers that Good Energy provided to the council. So, that's pretty much the gist of why I'm here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience wish to speak? All right, we're going to move on. We got Communication, item 14A, an email dated November 10, 2025, from Lori Cronley concerning a request to review and amend local fence ordinances. Mike, we're going to go to you on this one.
So, the town of South Kingstown actually does not have a fence ordinance, per se. A lot of towns do not. Some do. The reason for that is that it's covered by the State Building Code. And what the State Building Code basically says is, as long as your fence doesn't go over six feet, you don't need a permit for that. It's sort of, I guess, resident-friendly type, so that you don't have to go through some process. Now, we did look at several of the towns...
Now, we did look at, um, several of the towns around South Kingstown. Um, and the ones that do have a fence ordinance basically mimic state law. And they talk about how, um, fences, um, need to be under six feet or if they're over six feet, you need a permit. And by the way, that's true here in South Kingstown, too. If the fence is over six feet, you have to apply, um, and go through a process. But, um, you know, I, I understand this individual is, you know, concerned. Um, specifically, the individual raised the issue of the type of material on the fence. Even if we had a fence ordinance, since we don't, unless we're in the historic district, you, you can't even go there in terms of determining what type of material the fence could be made out of. Um, and then the other thing is, would be site distance. If someone puts up a fence sort of on the corner of their property and that creates an issue for people trying to make a left or right turn, whatever, um, we would get involved with that. But, if you want, I can provide you with the research we've done just so you can see what is out there and what we found. Um, I'd just take direction from you on this one. I, I'm not recommending that we do a fence ordinance. I've talked to Jamie Gorman. He doesn't recommend that we enact a fence ordinance either. Because it's covered by the law, the building code.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead.
Has anyone spoken to the resident who wrote the email?
I, I have not made...
Is that your?
I, I wrote to her, but, uh, in response to her email, but I didn't get a response.
Did you read, so...
Cause I, I didn't speak with her
Okay.
initially when she came into the office, probably about a month and a half ago.
So what is she, what, what, if she were to, what, what is she exactly seeking? A change in the materials or where the placement of the fences? I'm so confused about the maintenance, about her information.
You know, it wasn't very clear. It sounded like there was maybe, um, disagreement between the herself and the neighbor and then how it was gonna be maintained in the future, which is understandable, but to provide an easement or any kind of, um, you know, access to the property, typically, you know, it, you know, I, I asked if, if she had spoken to the neighbor, but it sounded like there was, um, perhaps something else going on. But the, the fence was a vinyl fence that was about six feet in height. Um, it looked like it was installed correctly, so, but it was exempt from permitting, so, um, that's about the, the summary.
Right, and so, when you install a fence, you can install it on the property line, up to and on the property line, correct?
Yeah, provided the, the footings or any portion of the fence is, you know, again, if it's exempt from permitting, I'm not gonna really dive into that.
Right.
But we recommend that it's installed on your property and you verify where your property line is.
Right.
The remedy is that, um, if you don't do it by survey and you have it in the wrong space, you're subject to having to tear it down. I mean, it's, it's pretty typical and classic that you know where your property line is through a survey with, um, bounds before you put a fence up. But if you don't, that's really not something between the person and the town. That's really something between the, that's a title issue between the two neighbors.
All right, any other questions from members on this? All right, I think we have enough information, so, uh, no vote to be taken on this. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Mike. All right, it's gonna bring us to the end here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn. We have a second. Any discussion? It's the Monday before Thanksgiving. Are we sure about this?
Happy Thanksgiving!
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is over. See you in...